The October 8, 2024 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. We will have the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Fig, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, once again, we come before you the second Tuesday of the month to conduct business here for the county. I pray you give us wisdom that we need to do our jobs this evening. I pray you bless everybody that is here, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Fig. Next up are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. I do want to make an announcement at the beginning of the meeting here, that there will be no discussion nor vote tonight on the rezoning of the Speedway property, or the property that also sometimes is referred to as the Black Oak Savannah property. So if you are here for that one tonight, that one will not be heard tonight. That will be heard. That has been moved until the November meeting. Next up, may I have a motion on the August minutes?
Mr. Root.
Yes, Mr. Katanzright.
Under communication, I was going to ask if we could take a moment of silence. I know it's been a year and a day now since the Israel Hamas war took effect. If we just take a moment of silence to remember all those who needlessly lost their lives a year ago in Israel and then unfortunate after-effect on Palestine. If we could just take a moment of silence for-
We can do that.
...those people. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let us take a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Katanzright.
Thank you.
May I have a motion on the August minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilman Fig, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The August council minutes are approved. Next up are St. Joseph County Council Board appointments. Mr. Morton?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. William DeLuca to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority Board.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. DeLuca to the Housing Authority. Any further council discussion or nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. William DeLuca is appointed to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority. That is all the county board appointments we have tonight. The other one has been held as Mr. Murray no longer desires to serve on the wastewater advisory board. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Report from the county commissioners. President Baxmire.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate something which we had a press conference on this morning, and that is the start of the See, Click, Fix app on our website. That can be accessed through the SJC 311 app, available on both Android and Apple devices. Basically what it is, is if a person sees a problem, they can take a picture of it, submit it, and it goes right to the department that is responsible. They get an acknowledgement that their concern has been addressed or acknowledged, and they can track the progress of the repairs. It also gives better access to our ordinances, the Health Department. So if it sounds like we're excited about it, we are, and I want to thank the council for providing the funding that allowed us to do that. I think it'll be a great asset to key to the citizens moving forward. Thank you for giving me a moment.
Thank you, President Baxmire. Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. We'll go to first readings. We have Bill number 109-24.
Bill number 109-24. An ordinance to repeal ordinances related to property tax abatement in St. Joseph County. Petitioners: Joseph Thomas, Amy Drake, Mark Root, and Randy Fig.
Bill number 109-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Mr. Shetzel?
Per Section 9, Paragraph C, I'd like to formally object to the said assignment and ask that the ordinance be referred to the Rules Committee for committee assignment.
Jen, can you please set up a Rules Committee, get the Rules Committee members together? Bill number 109-24 will first go to the Rules Committee.
Bill number what? Bill number 110-24. A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IEC 6-1.1-12.1-1. That sequence declaratory. Petitioner: Diversified Real Estate LLC.
Bill number 110-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 111-24. An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use's Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 12746 and 12726 McKinley Highway and unaddressed 3.73 acre parcel budding 12726 McKinley Highway to the west and south from our single-family district to see commercial district. Petitioner: Charles and Don Bullenbacher.
Bill number 111-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 112-24. An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use's Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located approximately 1.29 acres consisting of unaddressed plus or minus acre parcel north of 52553 Fur Road and directly fronting on State Road Highway, and a portion of unaddressed plus or minus 1.13 acre parcel north of 52553 Fur Road and directly fronting on State Road 23 Highway and the northwest corner of 52553 Fur Road directly fronting State Road Highway and Santa Monica Drive from OB Office Buffer District and our single-family district to see commercial district. Petitioner: Diocese of Fort Wayne South Bend, St. Pious the 10th Parish.
Bill number 112-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes our first reading for tonight. Next up are adoption of budgets. Mr. Murphy, would you please read the first one?
Bill number 93-24. An ordinance for appropriation and tax rates, Budget Form 4, Solid Waste.
All public hearings on Bill 93, 94, 95, and 96 were held at our September meeting, so we will simply move to council discussion and votes on the following bills. Is there a motion, a council motion on 93-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Ms. Hess. Any further council discussion on Bill number 93-24, Solid Waste? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 93-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Will you please read 94, number 24?
Bill number 94-24. An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form 4, Airport Authority.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Ms. Drake, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on 94-24? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that 94-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0.
Bill number 95-24. Ordinance for appropriation and tax rates, Budget Form 4, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on 95-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 95-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Please read 96-24.
Bill number 96-24. An ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, Indiana for the year 2025.
Mr. Murphy asked to make a statement?
Is that okay? I'd just like to say a few comments about the budget process.
I'm okay with that.
Thank you, counsel, for allowing me to speak just a minute or two on the budget process. Total general fund budget was $89.2 million. Total county budget was $239 million. We kicked off on May 8, 2024, so we've been at it for five months, and I think maybe that's important for citizens to realize that this council and this group of commissioners really take budgeting seriously. And I'd like to thank certain people. First of all, the county council and commissioners. All your meetings were well-attended. You had a lot of good engagement, a lot of vigorous debate, healthy debate, I think. I've really, as long as I've been here, I think this has probably been the best budget process as far as engagement from the county council and commissioners. So, well done to all of you. Like to thank the departments and agencies. We asked a lot of our departments and agencies this year. We asked for, in addition to the LAO budgets, we asked for information like staffing summaries, budget summaries, KPIs, and all other kinds of things. So I think overall, they did a really good job. So I'd like to thank our departments and agencies. Like to thank Jen Preawat for setting up these meetings. We counted up the number of meetings, if you count the kickoff meeting and the budget hearing and adoption, we had like 10 nights of meetings. So, some people think maybe it's a two- or three-day process. No, it's a lengthy process, and you all put a lot of time into the budget, and I think you can be proud of what you've accomplished. Like to thank Steve Dalton. He has a lot of insight into the county. I think you're going on maybe 10 years here, Steve. So that's 10 years of experience that we take advantage of during the budget processing at other times during the year. Last but not least, I'd like to thank two young ladies in our office, the auditor's office. It seemed, I've been doing, this is my eighth budget with the county, and it seemed like for a few years there, I was kind of like a lone ranger. I felt kind of like the weight of the budget was kind of on me to make all the updates and so forth. But that's not the case this year. Abby Doyle, who you know has done a great job here as deputy auditor, she put together the budget book, budget summaries. She also interacted well with council members, departments strategically and otherwise. I'm really proud of what she has accomplished. Katie Bishop was able to attend some of our meetings. She's more behind the scenes. We do what's called the gateway budget, which has to coincide exactly with the LAO budget, so she was in charge of making sure the state-approved budget module agreed to our LAO budget, and she did a great job behind the scenes. So again, thank you all for a good 2025 budget season.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion on Bill number 96-24?
Motion for passing.
Second. Motion to pass was made by Mr. Katanzright. It was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on 96-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
96-24. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 96-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our adoption of budgets tonight. Next up are resolutions.
Bill number 105-24. Resolution of St. Joseph County Council approving the issuance of bonds by the St. Joseph County Library and taking other actions related thereto.
Petitioner. Is a petitioner here? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the council.
Members of the council, Phil Fasenda, 201 South Main Street, South Bend, from Barnes and Thorberg here. I'm representing the library. I also have with me Stephanie Murphy, who will provide a little bit more detail on the projects that are contemplated to be financed with the two series of bonds. Overview with regard to the request. The library board met in August and approved the issuance of two series of bonds. One series will finance the renovation of the LaSalle, the renovation and expansion of the LaSalle branch of the library. The other series will finance the complete reconstruction, renovation, and improvement of the Western branch. The bond amounts for the first series is in an amount not to exceed $4 million. For the second series, that number is $6,350,000. The library is contributing $1.7 million of equity to the projects, and as such, although the bond amounts are set to provide flexibility, they don't quite know where they're going to apply the 1.7 million, it is anticipated that the total bond amount issued at the end of the day for the two series will be $8.65 million, not to exceed 8.65. The library is retiring their 2018 $5 million bond issued this year, and in connection therewith, there will be no additional taxes, no tax increase with regard to this bond issue, these two bond issues. They expect to close on the LaSalle branch bonds before the end of the year, and the Western bonds sometime in the spring of next year. The bonds will be for no longer than 20-year period, and if there's any questions, the interest rate, excuse me, will be in an amount not to exceed 5.5 percent. I'll let Stephanie make a few more comments about the projects.
Stephanie Murphy, 304 South Main Street, Executive Director at St. Joseph County Public Library. So, these projects came as the result of our facilities master planning that we did last year, and we are very well aware of the expansion of the IEC and all of the activity going on in the west side of the county, and we know that our west side branches are already busy. So, this bond would support the expansion of the LaSalle branch, adding additional meeting room space, and then the move of our Western branch out onto Western Avenue where it will be really visible to all of the new workers out in the IEC, adding meeting space, study room space, a business center, et cetera. So we think this will be a real boon to the community, again with no tax impact. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for either Mr. Fasenda or the library?
President Root, excuse me. I have one question. Mr. Fasenda mentioned 1.7 million in equity, but then you said something to the effect of you're not quite sure what that looks like. Could you clarify that a little bit? Maybe I didn't catch it quite right.
Sure. The question being which project that money will go to, whether it's LaSalle or Western. So it's just a matter of getting through the entire design and bid process to determine where our savings will go and what amount to each project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We will open to a public hearing on Bill number 105-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Rose Meisner, 1751 Portage Avenue by evening and 305 South Michigan by day. I'm just excited to speak in favor of the investment in these two branches for the St. Joseph County Public Library. It's a very rare thing to have an organization as excellent as the library persist at this level of quality across decades, across generations. And I know, in addition to the quality of people that the library attracts, it's because the county provides it with the resources it needs to maintain these beautiful branches throughout the county. The timing seems perfect, and I urge the county to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Casey Buckles, 2121 Bader Avenue in South Bend. I'm a professor of economics at the University of Notre Dame and a 19-year resident at South Bend, and a huge fan of the libraries. I started going when my kids were very young, just looking for something to do to get out of the South Bend cold. But we very quickly fell in love with it, not only for the resources that are there that I think we all know about, but particularly for the spaces that they provide for us to go as a family. But we've also found that it's one of the spaces in this community where we most interact with people from all cross-sections of our, all cross-sections of our neighbors. So, people of all ages and education backgrounds and income classes, that has a lot of value for us, and I'm really excited to see that extend and be rejuvenated in these two branches. This enthusiasm that I have for the library has meant that I have now found myself on the Friends of the Library Foundation board. So I am new to that, but in this short amount of time, I've already been very impressed with the way the library has so conscientiously thought about their next steps and what's the right investment for their future, and also the way that they are such good stewards of the resources of the community. And that's evidenced by the fact that they are putting forth this bond in a way that will not incur additional tax increases. So I encourage you to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 105-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Ms. Hess, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on 105-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 105-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0.
Bill number 106-24. A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving certain matters in connection with the New Carlisle Economic Development Area.
Thank you. Mr. Shalio?
Yep. Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth with offices on the 7th and 11th floor. Before you tonight, I'm here to talk about Resolution 106-24, and then Resolution 107-24 also relates to the same activity in the same development area, but we'll cover that separately in another presentation. Purpose of Resolution 106-24, this is the approval of the declaratory resolution process to expand the New Carlisle Economic Development Area, and the reason we're doing this is really for three purposes. The first is to create a new economic development area, a new allocation area, in coordination with the town of New Carlisle in the northwestern part of the existing development area. So, last year when we expanded the development area, we extended the development area to the west along the railroad tracks towards the viaduct and to capture some properties, the train, the old trailer park and some other properties, American Legion, that were going to be part of a future development area or in development projects. In coordination with the town, we're looking to expand that area. We're looking to expand it by 378 acres, add 34 parcels to the development area, and this is in coordination with the town. What we're looking to do, we have utility projects that we're talking about partnering with the town, looking at some targeted property acquisitions, and then there's some development projects that the coordination with the town and the county works well and works a little bit more efficiently if these areas are in the development area. Opportunity to use funds not only from this existing or this proposed allocation area, but also then other funds from the development area as projects and as resources are available. Second reason we're looking to expand the development area is to add the Amazon Web Service properties to the development plan as designated taxpayers. We've designated taxpayers in this area. Those include General Motors, Samsung SDI, their property, Airgas, the St. Joe Energy Center, and Cleveland Plus Tech and Co. All of those are designated taxpayers. We'd like to put the two Amazon Web Service sites, both north and south of the GM site, list those as designated taxpayers. That would allow us to collect personal property taxes generated in, on those two sites, to collect that increment into the TIF allocation area. And then the third thing we're looking to do, and that is really the substance of Resolution 107-24, is to approve a bond, a small bond, to do some targeted property acquisition, and again, create some resources, immediate resources, for these utility projects and some projects in this allocation area number five, so that we can move some projects forward immediately in partnership with the town of New Carlisle. So again, what we're looking to do today is ask for your approval of this resolution. This resolution is the last step in the process. We started with a declaratory resolution with the Redevelopment Commission. That action then goes to the Area Plan Commission, onto the Board of Commissioners, and then goes back to the Redevelopment Commission for a confirming resolution hearing and a public hearing. We had that earlier today, so that action was approved by the Redevelopment Commission, and then comes to the council for a final approval and final step in the process. The reason that you guys, you, the council, approve this, as we look at the whole process, the statute requires that the legislative body approve the declaratory resolution and approve these steps, and with you and St. Joe County being the legislative body, that's why you're required to take action on this. If there's any questions about this resolution, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any question from the council?
Mr. President Root, can you explain, Mr. Shalio, the areas, again, I know you have multiple times, the reason for Tiffing those areas and what that's going to do for the town? Because I've had discussions with the town, some people out there, Marcy Kaufman, and they, not for everybody, but they are for this. But can you explain it in simple terms?
I will do, I will absolutely-
And the positivity we'll get out of this, what's going to, how it's going to benefit that part of the county and the town?
Certainly. So, as we look at the eastern part of New Carlisle, so the area from the viaduct to the east of the eastern town limits, there are probably three development opportunities that are presenting itself. One is a future train station with Nick did. The second is, and you guys approved the mini storage warehouse project a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, I think, at this point, north of Michigan or north of US 20. So there's some coordination activities that need to happen with that, extending utilities and some other related coordination. And then there's a housing project associated on the western half of that property. So we're looking at how TIF coordination and how redevelopment coordination and some of the tools that we have can help the town as they move forward with those projects. There's three properties that are being targeted for acquisition by the town. There's a piece, a large piece of property just east of Joe's Grocery and the car wash. There's a piece of property, Caris Reels, and then there's a house adjacent to that. So those three properties play into a couple of those different projects to help move those forward. The other project, which is a little bit more near and dear to my heart, are bike and pedestrian trails. So that's another thing, as we look at, as we look at the opportunity to create some bike and ped trails in this area in coordination with the town, the opportunity to have this area in the TIF district to have revenue that we can bring to those projects immediately opens up the opportunity to move those projects forward a little faster.
The other land, is there any, the land, you're the acquisition of the land, and you're going to Tiff those areas?
Correct.
That's going to increase the value of the land, therefore the TIF collects those funds, and we can use that money. I'm just trying to explain it for some of my constituents that can understand the reason for doing this.
Yeah. So, short term, if we, the county, through the Redevelopment Commission, or we, the town, acquire properties, it'll take those properties down to a net zero value. So there'd be a loss of value on those properties in the short term. But when there's development on those properties, then that'll create increment from zero up. And so the opportunity to create a, you know, that pot of money that then can be kept within that allocation area to do projects, again, helps to, helps to boost and move forward projects a little faster.
And the-
And that's revenue that doesn't exist today. We can't use the money that we have in- We can't use the money that we have in the existing development area in those areas today.
Just to be clear, again, with the TIF?
Mm-hmm.
The monies stay in the TIF and serve the TIF out there?
That's correct.
Correct?
Correct. So there's two ways money can, in an economic development area. So again, as we approach Thanksgiving, I guess I want to go back and use the old pumpkin pie analogy, if you will. The economic development area that we're looking to expand is that larger pi-ten, if you will, that the pi sits in, that the allocation areas sit in. Generally, an economic development area doesn't have five allocation areas. Now, we are looking at another project area up in the 933 corridor that would have four allocation areas on day one, but this would have five allocation areas. So all of the funds from all of those allocation areas within that economic development area, the money needs to be spent within the pi-ten. So it's the in argument. Now, there are some cases where a road may lead into the area, a sewer line may need to leave the area to connect to something else, and that's the serving argument. So with TIF, you can in, use money in or serving the area. Now, you can't take that money and go build Anderson Road Park or a pedestrian trail along State Road Four using New Carlisle money. It needs to stay in or servicing that area.
And the utility work, what utility work is it sewer?
So there's a sewer project.
And where's the location of that?
Yeah, so there's a, as we, as we look at a potential project up along Timothy Road, Marvel Lane, there's a need to extend sewer up into that area. To make that sewer project really work, though, there's a lift station in Forest Main that have to be rebuilt, and one needs to be decommissioned and relocated over in front of the Car Wash. And so we'd have to then create a new lift station in Forest Main there to take all that sewage to pump east into the sewer network over along Winter Green and then ultimately into the city's, the town's connection point, just east of, just east of Walnut, but near Tech &amp; Co. And then the water projects, very similar, extending water line in that, or water lines in those areas. The other water line project we have, and it's still early in the phase in development, is extending water west on Edison Road and then north up Winter Green to do some repiping of the network as we look to separate the water systems. Town of New Carlisle soon will have two water systems. They'll have a potable non-lime softened water system and a potable lime softened, or, yeah, lime softened system. And so we've got to move pipes around and move water around, and you can't have the lime softened water and the non-lime softened pipes, as the engineers tell me. So there's a bunch of water projects that have to happen in that area also.
And the concerns are too, well, they're going to have more industrial growth, it's too close to Winter Green subdivision, and it's too close to the town. This is why the town and the county are working together. This is a big reason, and that's why I'm for this, because of talking to the town and of course us, it's going to give them a bigger buffer zone, if you will. Could I say buffer zone?
Yeah, well, and speaking of buffer zone, there's a, there's a couple of parcels of land that sit on the northeast quadrant of Winter Green and Edison. And right now, there's a discrepancy between the town's comprehensive plan and the county's comprehensive plan on prospective future use of those areas. Those parcels presently aren't in the town limits, and so there's a question on which map would rule if there was a rezoning proposed. Having the Redevelopment Commission involved to a larger degree, if it was determined at some point in time that area needed to be brought in for a development purpose, a development of a buffer purpose, having the additional resources of the Redevelopment Commission could help aid that project and move that forward, thus eliminating the conflicting map issue.
So the concerns of industrial growth are there?
At that parcel, it would be very difficult to do industrial on the northeast corner of Winter Green and Edison, based on a large underground high-pressure gas line, the same gas line that services the Energy Center, as well as, I think, three different overhead power lines that run through the site. So not a lot of land to do an industrial development on that site, but would make a great buffer from the industrial to the town.
If we didn't do the TIF, Mr. Dalton, versus leaving it as is, the negativity of that would be they wouldn't get their funds, correct, in the TIF and the New Carlisle and in that zone?
Anytime we create an allocation area TIF, we capture the growth in those parcels and we're able to use the growth times the tax rate for projects in that area. If, on the other hand, there were no allocation area formed, no TIF, then those dollars would not be available. They're not new money to the town, they're not new money to the county, they're not new money to the library. They would not be available because they would become part of the net assessed value of the county, and they would have the effect of just pushing the tax rate down. So the new money, the new money for your projects are going to have to be in the TIF. You're not going to have new money without the TIF to do these projects.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Root.
Mr. Shalio, I think you explained this in the committee meeting, but I got to ask again. Allocation Area Five, that brings in Marvel and Winter Green now, and that portion of Winter Green that you were just talking about is in the unincorporated county.
That is correct.
Just to confirm that on the record, can you state, I think what you told us before, the purpose of that was to include that in the area if infrastructure needs to be extended out to the industrial park. But does that not necessarily mean that property, that agricultural property is included for industrial development?
Yeah, no, so really, the reason we included that parcel was it just, it allowed us to go all the way to the right-of-way, the southern right, Southern, Southern right-of-way Edison, Western right-of-way, Winter Green. Again, we've got water and sewer in that area. We know that there may have to be, at some point in time, additional right-of-way acquired from those properties if we want to do a bike and pedestrian trail. We're working with JPR to do bicycle pedestrian trail planning in that area, and we believe that Edison Road will be that corridor into town from the IEC. So we know that there's some needs there. And then again, some additional utility work up Winter Green. The other thing, too, and the reason we put that piece in, as we look to do roadway improvements, we've done a lot of paving out in the IEC, but at some point, we need to pave Edison, we need to pave Winter Green, so it's good to have it in the area. Even though it serves it, it's sometimes a little better to have it in.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the council on 106-24? We'll now move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of taxpayers and being one for St. Joe County, and I'm going to speak to the Amazon designation, not the, not the areas. I don't have time to speak to the areas you just discussed. When you, first of all, when you designate it as an Amazon, as a taxpayer in the TIF, then you're locking up those funds. Everyone understands that. If you don't designate it, you don't lose those funds, those aren't going back to Amazon, those are going to go into the general fund. And over thirty-five years, that's going to be over $1 billion. We learned that when you granted the 85% tax abatement for the personal equipment property for Amazon, that the 15% the county gets to TIF take, if you pass this, you're locking that up to be used only by the TIF, just as Mr. Shalio described. And that's a problem for me. It's great to have new sewers and water out in the area. I commend that, but we're sitting up in Clay Township, all the way over to Granger, folks, and many of you represent these areas, and all the way down to Mishawaka with failing septic systems. We don't have sewer systems. Why? Because there's not the funds to do so. So you lock this $1 billion up on top of a billion dollars that's coming in from the property taxes, the real property taxes, to the TIF. They're going to have, the RDC is going to have total control over about $2.2 billion of funds out there. And meanwhile, you're sitting discussing whether someone deserves a $10,000 or $12,000 raise at a, at a high level for, in your county budget. So I think we need to take a step back and say, okay, you've granted the TIF a lot of money. Fifty billion, $50 million bond has been offered and achieved. You've granted another billion dollars in real property tax that will go to the TIF. This is a billion dollars that could, over thirty-five years, it's not, it could come back into the county coffers. If it turns out, this is not related to the, to the area that Mr. Thomas was talking about, this is the Amazon designation. Now, I want to see, as a county taxpayer, why they need $2.2 billion in funds in the next year when Amazon is paying 114 billion, million for the sewer and water out of their pocket, and they've got a billion dollars to work with and 50 million in cash, some of it spent already. And I think those questions need to be asked and answered before you approve this tonight. And I ask you to delay it, maybe get answers to that, to look at the rest of the county and say, whoa, wait a minute, we need to have a source of revenue that can be counted on, and we need sewers as well as Amazon does up in Clay Township and all over the unincorporated areas of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Mitchell. My address is 27205 Riley Road in North Liberty. And he covered on the Amazon thing. I was going to say, I didn't even know where to start when I started hearing this, because that you're designating them as taxpayers, but didn't you guys just give them an abatement? And I know that our state gave them a sales tax abatement, and they've given them millions of dollars in grants, so I'm kind of curious where they're going to actually provide this tax money to us. Number two, what I, when they ask you, the reason why they need your approval is because what happens is exactly what they've been saying, is it goes to an unelected board. You no longer have control over those funds. And it is a big deal into this. When you're being lied to about the TIF money while they say it on their website and while it's supposed to stay in that area, every one of you should know that they use New Carlisle's TIF money out in North Liberty for the broadband project. You don't believe me, look it up on the news, and if you don't have a, or you have a problem and you want to find it, you can go to my website, the www.votamandamitchell.com, and you can see the documents. The other thing, I don't think you guys realize how far out of control this is. California had the same problem, and they ended, because of financial problems with the TIFs, they ended up canceling it. You can look that up. And in our county, and you can go to the website and click on the links, we already have over $2.2 billion in incremental assessments for TIFs already for our county. That is what they get the taxes off, that assets. So let me give you an example, which they're not explaining very well to you. This is just arbitrary numbers. Let's say they go in and get a base value. It is $40,000 before they build on it, right? And then they build on it and they go in there, and now they're like, it's $500,000. The incremental assessed value, what we, they get for tax money is the $460,000. That's what they get the tax money off. Do you know what we get? The tax money off the $40,000. And then what it does is now it picks winners and losers in our economy and puts the burden on our backs to meet the essential services in our county. Do you want to know why we need to raise our taxes? Do you want to know why? It's because of this, it's out of control. You guys should stop giving them more money and start holding it, use your job, your position, to make sure the money gets allocated to where it needs to be. And, um, let's see, besides that, I don't know what else to say. There's a lot more, and I would be willing to sit down with every one of you. There's videos on there to understand that, and I put it on the website, so you guys can further understand this. And thank you.
Is there anyone else? Dan Caruso?
Good evening. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. First, I'd like to thank Bill for finally letting me know that they understand there's a difference between what the town map says and what the county map says. Town has different ideas for what they want in this area around Marvel Lane, Timothy Road, down Winter Green than the, than the county does. My problem is, and it's been a problem, it's come up many times, whenever there comes maybe an item for economic development to push in the area, it doesn't matter what was designated originally for the area, it gets overruled because, well, if we point out that the Comprehensive Land Use Plan says this, often economic development says, yeah, but that plan's 20 years old, so we're going to do it this way. But if it's to their benefit, then economic development will point out, well, that's what the, what the plan says because we're going, so we're going to stick to that. I don't like how we flip-flop our needs, flip-flop, not our needs, the needs of economic development. I, I just, again, I'm glad that Bill did recognize and did admit that the maps do differ. I thank Councilman Thomas for his questions, and Councilman Katanzerite. I'm glad you guys are looking at this. I don't see, I don't see a reason to get the Redevelopment Commission involved in our town. Just, we're doing fine. I mean, yeah, we're, there's, there's some issues coming up, but to now say in allocation Area Five, now the Redevelopment Commission has some, some control of, has all control of the funds up in that area, I see economic, county economic development coming in and saying, okay, since we're footing the bill for this, we're going to let another Amazon project coming up in this area. I just think this opens up a whole can of worms here that we don't want to get into. I do not like this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 106-24 is now closed. Mr. Shalio, would you like a chance to respond to any of those comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, I guess I'd just like to respond to the one about the using TIF to pay for fiber on the south side. When the honeysuckle deal was put together, the honeysuckle sits in solar economic development area, it's its own separate economic development area, not part of New Carlisle Economic Development Area. When that development agreement was put together, there was a $3 million payment that would come to the county for projects that the county deemed acceptable. That $3 million is not TIF money, it's not targeted money, it was money that was to come to the council as part of a prepayment for loss of revenue for a period of time as, as the funding cycle got cut up. That money was put into the General Redevelopment Fund. The General Redevelopment Fund allows money to be spent anywhere within the corners of the county. It was determined that fiber on the southwest side of the county is an important thing that we want to do. We want to bring fiber to the southwest side of the county. So that's, the determination was made to use that $3 million for fiber. So it wasn't that we were taking New Carlisle money and putting fiber down in North Liberty. I want to correct that, that misunderstanding. Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Mr. Shalio, there is a, I had a recent meeting with the town president of New Carlisle, too, with Ms. Kaufman. And as I understood it, because I asked her this question about what was coming up, this vote tonight, and as I understood it, the town's not poised or in a position to have the financial wherewithal to maybe do this improvement that we're looking to do with the sewer project. And that's what I understood, why the county was involved, in order to facilitate that and leverage those dollars so the sewer project could get done, that needs to be done for the benefit of the town, but at the expense of the county. Do I have that right, or is that wrong?
You're very much right. Same with some of the targeted property acquisitions, same with the water projects. This allows the revenue in that area to be collected, to be used to service those projects, and it doesn't take away from other town revenue that the town would typically spend to do those projects.
Would the town lose any authority by what was asserted to here, you know, if development were to?
That economic development would just come in and dictate, and we'd put Amazon data centers everywhere? No. One of the things, those that have been on the council a while understand that we've been working long and hard to build a relationship with the town of New Carlisle, and this is a huge opportunity to, again, continue to build those bridges and work together. This is an opportunity for them, the town, to advance their comprehensive plan in a very big way in this specific targeted area. So we, no, we think this is a great opportunity for everybody to work together.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, it may have been a misunderstanding on my part, so I apologize to the person who made the comment, but I'm going to ask you a clarifying question as it relates to it. The point of TIF is to effectively The, the point of TIF is to effectively have collateral to finance against, correct?
Correct.
And it's not that the developer, the owner of the property, after the baseline is set for TIF, gets a tax break, it's just a dictation of where that tax money goes to, correct?
Correct.
So the, that baseline and sets the floor, property values increase, personal property values increase, and those funds go to that TIF district and the body that manages the funds within that TIF district, correct?
Correct, yep.
So it's not a tax break for anybody to be within that TIF district, it's just a way to have collateral to finance against, in, in a world where that's, that's what's required. And, and if not for TIF, some of the infrastructure, some of the economic development, some of the other opportunities that we need could not be funded.
Very, very correct. I, I mean, I think to take Mr. Francis's example, we'd love to have revenue, targeted revenue, that we could do sewers and water projects in Clay Township. At some point, we're gonna need to address sewer or water or both in Granger, in the northeast part of the county, by having projects that generate revenue and targeted areas to capture that revenue to do those projects, that's why you do that, and that's how you can make that work. Otherwise, you have to find money within your existing budget or raise taxes to do those projects.
And, and as it relates to, this, this creates a revenue source to, to finance a bond against. It also is a revenue source that supports maintenance of infrastructure inside of this TIF boundary, too, correct? So if Sky Matters, the county engineer, needs to maintain the roads within this fairly sizable boundary, those TIF monies could be used, relieving the rest of the infrastructure budget for the county to the remainder of the county. Is that assumption correct?
Exactly. We actually, we had allocated, we, the redevelopment commission, had allocated $1.8 million to help with the New Carlyle Highway Garage renovation. That money wasn't needed, that $1.8 million was used to pave a number of roads within the IEC that would have needed to be paved, and but for us, working together to use that revenue, would have taken money away from other areas that also needed to be paved.
And one last clarifying point, if I may. It may be pie in the sky to some folks, it may also not be a timely thing to think about because bond commitments are longstanding, oftentimes 20 years or so, right? But if the performance, the financial performance of the TIF district outpaces our bond obligations, some of that funding could be released to the taxing districts, the township, the, the town, the county, library, things of that nature, correct?
That's correct. But I would note that when that is released, when there's a release of assessment, it's not a release of cash, per se, it's a release of assessment. So that generates a whole series of other levers and switches that cause a valuation, or the, the tax rate goes down, but it doesn't generate cash that directly goes to those bodies.
Right. A dollar within a, a TIF property, once released, is not a dollar anymore, it may be some portion of a dollar, and then also broken down between the varying taxing districts.
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
So, Mr. Dalton and Mr. Shalio, this also, when you're TIF-ing this area, in any area, this takes, after just going over through this budget, this takes a pretty big burden off our county budget. In other words, the western part of the county now is gonna receive these funds, these big improvements, which are millions of dollars, takes off the heat off the county budget in a whole, correct?
Yes.
A pretty substantial-
Yes.
-number.
Correct.
Like Commissioner Baxmeyer and myself, and talking with the town, Olive Township, you know, fire station, millions of dollars, they're getting a fire station, they gotta buy the land, they gotta build the fire station. The fire trucks, have anybody priced a fire truck out? My God, are those things expensive. So this is gonna help the town and the county, and that part of the, the county which is needed. And we're just scratching the surface, how much money. Talk about billions, that's over a long period of time. This is, I mean, this, this money is gonna take some pressure off our budget as a whole, correct?
Correct. Just want to make sure we're shaking our heads in the right direction, so, yes.
Mr. Root? Mr. Wright?
What are the dan, what are the dangers of TIF-ing too much of the county? Like, if we keep doing this everywhere? Like, when, when do you have too much, and what are the, what are the negatives of that?
Well, I, so, I, I think maybe to Commissioner or Councilman Thomas's point, to a degree, you become reliant on it. If, if, TIF is not forever, so if you build a system where you rely on it for payment of salaries, or payment of, of equipment, or, or continuing to maintain and, and do road projects, things like that, at some point, that TIF expires. And when it expires, then that liability has to be picked up by, by the general budget. So is there a balance of how big, too much? I, I mean, a lot of the cities, Mishwaka, South Bend, if you look at their allocation area maps, or their EDA maps, cover large parts of their cities to cover a lot of those services. So it's a supplement to their budget process. But when those go away, then the, the regular budget has to balance out and, and cover those costs. So I, I think it's a mechanism, I think it all has to work together. The county budget has to work with the redevelopment commission, the budgets have to work together. And again, I think to the point of, if we can, we, the redevelopment commission, can pick up some of those costs, where we pave some of those areas that are within the development areas, or we do utility projects and things like that, that reduces and allows that money to be spent in areas that aren't covered by those allocation areas.
It seems like there gets to be a point where there's so much money for the redevelopment commission, who's not elected, to be making decisions on the funding. That's one of my issues.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Shalio, could you speak to Mr. Caruso's comments in reference to not wanting the economic development commission to make decisions in New Carlyle? If I understood you correctly, Mr. Caruso?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be real honest, I don't want to be put in that position either. The town, I, we're developing a better relationship between the town and the township and the county, and I think, I think we're headed in a real good direction. But again, what's in the town is, is the towns to make decisions. If there's things that we can help with, but it's not ours to dictate. It's, it's a partnership that we've developed over a number of years, whether it's underwater projects, or, or some of these other utility projects, that as we build this trust and as we build these relationships, it, it's not mine to dictate. At, at the end of the day, if it's a rezoning project that has to happen, the council still has to rezonate, the redevelopment commission doesn't drive the rezonings. So there, there will be projects that will come before the, before the town, or before redevelopment commissioner, before the council ultimately, that the goal will be to have that buy-in. Mercy Kaufman, town council president, had conflicting meetings tonight, so she wasn't able to join us to, to speak in support of this. But this really opens up an opportunity, again, to, to build that partnership across, across that line.
Because I was under the impression that that partnership, like you were saying, has been developing for quite a while, so I was pretty surprised to hear Mr. Caruso make those comments, so that's why I asked you to speak on it.
Certainly.
Any further council questions for Mr. Shalio? Hearing none, I have a motion on bill number 106-24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Thomas, it was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on bill number 106-24? Hearing none, Clark, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
No? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
No.
No? It passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 106-24 was passed by a vote of 7 to 2. Will you please read bill number 107-24?
Bill number 107-24, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the issuance of bonds by the St. Joseph County Redevelopment District and taking other actions related thereto.
Commissioner?
Members of the council, Phil Fasenda of Barnes &amp; Thornburg, 201 South Main Street. Bill gave a, a, a very thorough explanation of what these bonds will be, part of what these bonds will be used for. They are, it's a relatively smaller bond in the, in the, in the grand scheme of the dollars we've been talking about. It's a $5 million bond, not to exceed. I, I won't get into the projects, but I will give you some details with regard to the bonds, and that is that they are not to exceed 20 years. It is at an interest rate not to exceed 7%. We talked about some property acquisition, the reason for the 7% is it's, it will likely be issued as a taxable bond, and that's a taxable rate. One additional aspect of it is, I wanted to point out to you that the, that the funding for the bond is TIF. So there is a tax pledge, and it is anticipated that TIF will pay for, for these bonds, and that there will never need to be a levy on, 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 a levy in connection with the payment of debt service on these bonds. And that's all in connection with the prior discussion about TIF revenues coming in. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number 107-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hey, Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. Look, I'm not really against TIFs in general, I'm against the expansion of TIFs to the extent that they have been in, in St. Joe County, the indebtedness that we undergo, the bonding. We just had a $50 million bond issued earlier this year, based upon the GM properties, and GM stalled out right now, but that bond is still available, the monies are available. TIF bonds have certain fixed costs, the larger, you have fixed costs for the, for the underwriter, the bond, the, the, you know, the consultants who are processing them, and therefore, the lower the value of the bond, the higher those fixed costs are in percentage terms to the bond itself. I would like to know what the $5 million's being spent on. Where's the $50 million that was borrowed just earlier this year? Why do we need another $5 million bond? I asked that at the RDC, no one had an answer to me. It is not your purvey, it is out of the TIF monies, but we don't, you also have the, the property taxes coming in on the real property for Amazon, which seem to go completely uncommented on, which is going to be more than adequate for bonding in the future. So I don't know why they, you have to go out now, and it hasn't been explained as a rationale, and issue a $5 million bond. I do know it's not gonna be spent up near New Carlyle. I think it's gonna be spent down on the roadwork at State Road 2 in, in Strawberry. I may be wrong on that, but I'd like an answer from Mr. Shalio, because New Carlyle is often used as a, as a sort of fig leaf to say, we're doing this for the town, when in fact, this bond money is, a very small portion of it might be used for property acquisition up there. But I think a large amount of it will be used down south for this expensive interchange, may be a good move or not. But where is the money on the $50 million? Why are we going into more bonding right at this point in time, at 7% and high fixed costs? I'd like the answer to that question. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Mitchell. My address is 27205 Riley Road, North Liberty. Kind of bringing up the same thing, there's a lack of transparency with the redevelopment commission, right? And we redirect it to an unelected board, and we also can't hold them accountable, right? But did you guys know how far in debt we are? According to state records, and again, you can go to the website, I put the documents up there, so people can actually look into it, but we're almost $180 million in debt obligation for our county. That's not the city. It's crazy, guys. And what they did in California with the TIF is they, that what that money, the bonds is, is that's on the projected revenue for that money that's coming in. Remember that $460,000 that they're projecting to get taxes on? That's what they're taking the bonds out on, right? And they say, don't worry, you're not gonna be responsible. But what happens if a housing crisis happened, like in California? You guys are dependent upon that. We still have to meet those obligations, and if those businesses don't do as well, if they decide to leave, or whatever happens, or if there's an economic crisis, or, I don't know, maybe another 2020, right? And we crash, guess who's responsible for it? It is us. So maybe we need to take a step back and look at our finances, and quit handing it to an unelected board. You guys are responsible, not them. This isn't free money, this is our tax money. Thank you.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. Again, I want to thank you for asking the questions you asked. They were questions I'd like to ask, but I don't get answers. I, I just, I, I think there's, there needs to be some safeguard. I'm, I'm particularly concerned about this property along Winter Green Road that is, I call it, above the Energy Center. I'm, I just see bad things happening there. I see maybe cheap apartments coming up to act as a buffer between the, the industrial area and those nice houses there on the west side of Winter Green Road and going down Dunn Road. There, there are some nice properties there. I don't know that they need any kind of, any kind of construction there. I, I foresee, the town foresees the green spaces, the biking trails, the hiking paths, those types of things there. Somehow, I, I just feel from experience that should the offer come up for somebody, some industrial person come in from out of town and say, man, that's a nice spot, I'd like to locate there. From, from past experience, I got a feeling that that would be for sale, and they'd be able to locate there. I want to, I'd love to keep that from happening, that, that is a nice area, I walk my dogs down there. I, I love that area. I can see that becoming just another industrial spread area. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak in opposition? Anyone online wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 107-24 is now closed. Mr. Fasenda, would you like a chance to respond?
Bill Shalio, I'm gonna take his response time, just, maybe just in the sake of clarity of how this works, we're looking at a $5 million bond. The, the goal of that is, is to do property acquisition in the northeast and southeast quadrants of State Road 2 and Larison, to help with property acquisition related to the, the pending interchange project. We, the county, are still coordinating with Endat on the final cost and final involvement to that project, but it looks like the county's, the, the, the local match for that project will be $19 million. Seven of that is committed by Amazon Web Service, so that takes our match down to $12 million. So what we're required to do is part of that $12 million, and again, it's not a final agreement yet, we're still waiting in the MOU from the state on this. Of that $12 million, the county's required to bring all of the property needed for the intersection project to the table, so, and then allowed to use that cost to match as part of our match. So as we buy the property, or as we get it donated from GM or AWS, that value reduces our $12 million cost in the project. So we've got property acquisition there. On the northwest, or in the allocation area number five area, again, we're working with the town, the town has, got some prospects, got some, got some targeted properties, and until the properties were put into the allocation area number five, until there was the opportunity for some revenue, we don't have a finalized agreement with the town on how much revenue will be spent up there, which projects will be done, which projects will be done, and what order. So we're, we're looking forward to moving forward with a lot of projects up there, and the targeted stuff at the interchange, and the $5 million is pretty limited. So to address the question on how much money, so we did a $50 million bond a year ago, 114 million's coming from AWS. So that's a lot of money for projects to be done in that area. That includes water projects, sewer projects, a water tower, roadway improvements, other improvement drainage project, we're moving the Nespa Johnny did. So there's a lot of projects that that 100, what, 160 million-ish is, is covering. We anticipate on October 22nd, opening the Phase 3 Water Treatment Plant Project, Project, getting bidders in for that project. We anticipate that's a $25 million project. None of these projects in the IEC- None of these projects in the IAC have been inexpensive, but they've all been within the budget that we've targeted. A lot of that money is coming back to us, so again, we have a contract with AWS to cover the cost for their parts of the project. We have a contract with GM to cover their parts of the project. We sold a $50 million bond, there's a commitment and development agreement that's starting in 2026. They start paying $4.5 million a year. That's actually more than our bond debt, so we'll have money to cover that bond when that comes through. But the reason for this bond, a small bond, is a shortfall in revenue. We bring in only so much money. We've got to cover all these other expenses in the short term, so we need a little bit of revenue to help cover everything in the interim, so. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Root.
Mr. Thomas?
So summarize, if you can, the $50 million. Roads, interchange, utilities.
Yeah, so that $50 million project that was, that's, that is originally targeted for GM-related projects, so that was the extent, the Fillmore Waterline project, the Larison Road lift station project, the Nesbitt Johnny Ditch relocation, the Fillmore Road construction project, so from Fillmore Road to Larison, Larison roadway improvements from the end of the States project all the way up to Edison, those will all be part of those improvement projects. That'll take us just to about $50 million between the road, the water, the sewer, and the ditch project. The rest of the projects, the water treatment plant upgrades, the water tower, water line extensions, lift station, and Forest Main Project, it's Smilax, State Road 2, and then the Edison Road Sewer Project, that'll account for that other 114 million. That money, a lot of big projects, so that money goes pretty quickly. But I would tell you that to this point, I believe all our projects have come in under the engineer's estimate, which is always a good thing, and right now, very few change orders have been issued on the project, so they're coming in on budget or at the targeted budget.
Mr. Fasenda, I have a question on the bonds. Guaranteed, that word guaranteed comes up. Can you speak on that?
Yeah, so there is a special benefits tax pledge on the bonds themselves, meaning that if there isn't sufficient other revenues, in this case, TIF revenues, to pay, then the county, the redevelopment commission would have to levy a tax. This is similar to other structures that the county council has seen before. The RDA bonds are a similar structure. Again, other revenues, that is TIF revenues, have been, and current TIF revenues, not, you know, future TIF revenues, it's based on current TIF revenues, that, based on that, we have an estimate of coverage for the debt service. How much revenue, how much TIF revenue are we bringing in versus what's the debt service on the bonds? And with that, there is a reasonable expectation that you will, that the county will not have to, that the redevelopment district will not have to levy a tax.
20-year bonds?
Just under 20-years bonds, yes.
And just again, I would like the public to know, the bonds are purchased by people like us, taxable and non-taxable, right?
Right, correct. There will be an underwriting, in this case, it may be a small, because it's a $5 million versus the $50 million, $50 million would have been a full underwriting with a public sale. In this case, it may end up with, you know, a financial institution that would hold the entire bond.
Thank you.
Yep.
President Root.
Mr. Shetzel.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fasenda, so could you, we know that the money from GM is going to the $4 million plus per year is going to pay for that $50 million bond.
Right.
Could the rest of the bonds will be paid back by TIF money? Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, you're referring to these bonds?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they will be.
And have you ever seen a situation where a guarantee was kicked in, such as you've explained, the guarantee tax, where you would have to raise taxes?
No, I haven't personally, and I can tell you that this county, in the years that I've worked for them, we've, the St. Joseph County, where the redevelopment district, have utilized this structure for several bonds, and they've never been, had, no levy has ever been put in place to pay for the bonds.
Very good, thank you.
Any further counsel questions? Mr. Root. Mr. Katanzright.
This actually is for, I think, Mr. Shalio, just to clarify some things. One of the citizens I got to spoke tonight, Mr. Shalio, explained to us that the GM project has stalled out. Can you address that?
I'd love to. The GM project is not stalled out. The GM project took a while to develop a joint venture relationship with Samsung SDI. When that project originally came to you in '22, '23, it was a partnership with LG. There was a separation of sorts. They got the new partner in Samsung, it just took a while to build that relationship. Couple weeks, maybe a month ago, there was an announcement that that relationship has been consummated, so that joint venture now exists. They've hired a COO, we've met her, she's a fantastic, fantastic person. She's been involved with not only GM for a number of years, but Toyota, done a lot of plant openings and plant development. Actually opened, was the plant manager at the Altium facility in Lansing and helped bring that in from the ground up, so great addition, should be a fantastic partner for us. They've hired general counsel, they're hiring other team members to bring in as part of their leadership team. Work is and has been going on on site. It will continue to get a little bit more aggressive over the next couple of months, but again, we're heading into winter, so there's only so much that can be done, although our friends at AWS would tell you they will work night and day and cold and hot, so it doesn't matter, but, so I think you're going to see a lot of work happening in that. The commitment is to have battery production late 2026, early 2027, but full production in 2027, which meets all the target dates in the development agreement, so we've never felt that, while the project was delayed, it was never shelved or anything like that, so.
And you've explained it ad nauseam a couple times tonight, but I mean, the $50 million is not unspent, it's actually committed to, and bids have been awarded, it's currently...
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, we, and I don't keep the books, Frank Fotia in our office keeps all the books, but we are, we are well into contract on several of those projects. We have, we have money that will be spent on the interchange project as part of that $12 million match. I mean, we had budgeted for that, so there are some expenses still yet to be had, but by and large, all the money that's moving around is moving around and under contract right now.
Thank you.
Any other counsel questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion on 107-24?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Katanzright, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further counsel discussion on 107-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
No.
No. Passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 107-24 was passed by a vote of 7 to 2. That concludes resolutions for tonight. Next up are salary amendments.
Bill number 104-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, prosecutor.
May I report, please, Ms. Drake?
Bill number 10424 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, excuse me. Bob Raisenhover, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this evening to ask for an appropriation and salary amendment from the prosecutor's stop, 2004-2025 grant. It's for the fiscal year 2025, beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2025. It's to, the amount of the grant, it's a one-year, $171,286 continuation grant. It's to finance or pay the salaries of three deputy prosecutors, two paralegals, and three victim advocates.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number 104-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 104-24 is closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further counsel discussion on 104-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 104-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Next up is 108-24.
108-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance establishing the salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024. Petitioner, prosecutor.
May I report, please?
Bill number 10824 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Raisenhover. We're here to request appropriation of funds and a salary amendment from the prosecutor's Volca 2024-003 grant. It's Fund 8117. It's to finance the partial salaries of two victim advocates and the director of victim services. It's a $87,156 for the first of a two-year, $171,891 grant. It requires a 25% match, which is included, excuse me, in the prosecutor's 2024 budget.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number 108. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Online? Public hearing on bill number 108-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Ms. Hess, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further counsel discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 108-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0.
Thank you.
That concludes our salary amendment for tonight. Next up is a public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters.
Bill number 103-24, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County government.
Thank you. All fiscal matters were heard at our September committee meeting and discussed by the council at that time, but we do need to take action on item G to either put it on the agenda or do something with it, so is there a motion concerning item G?
Mr. Root, I'd like to make the motion, put it with our bill, put it back on the table.
Put it back on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to put item G back on the table was made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Ms. Drake. Any comments on the, on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright?
No question on the motion, I just hope we get to discuss it, because we didn't discuss it.
We will, once it comes, if it makes it to the bill, then we become part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Any further comments on this motion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll on the motion to put part G back on the table?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
9-0.
Thank you. Part G was put back on the table by a vote of 9 to 0 and now becomes part of the main bill. We will now open the main bill to public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to any component, component of bill number 103-24 favorably in the room? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak to any part of bill 103-24 favorably? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak to the bill in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on bill number 103-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to pass.
Second.
President Baxmeyer, were you hoping to say something? It's coming. It's coming. Motion to, I heard Ms. Drake make a motion to Mr. Thomas.
I second it.
All right, we may have a motion to approve bill 10324, parts A through G, made, motion made by Ms. Drake, seconded by Mr. Thomas. We are now open to counsel discussion. Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Root, we haven't discussed item G. If we have, it's been a while, and just to refresh our memories, I'm wondering if we can ask the commissioner some questions about item G.
We can do that.
Okay. Mr. Baxmeyer, can you refresh our memory as to item G and how we got where we're at? It was tabled for quite a few months.
Sure.
Let us know where we're at with this and what the expenditures...
We had a discussion at the, at the committee meeting.
Right.
My contention was that the total expenditure for all legal services and all the categories through the end of June was at 48% of what the council appropriated for those services. You might recall that last year, we, you, with commissioners attending, kept that total amount within the 5% of, 4% suggested allocation. What we did, or what was done, was money was taken out of the general legal services and put into the liability fund. So what we have now is we're out of money in the general services, we have additional money in liability legal services, but in totality, we are within budget as directed by the council. So we had a bit of a disagreement as to whether we should take money out of the liability and move it into the general legal services, or should we have an additional appropriation? And it was a little disagreement between the auditor and the Mr. Dalton as to which way it should be done, and it was not, didn't get a favorable recommendation, it got no recommendation. We asked that it be taken off of the table last month in September, so that we could take a deeper dive into that, and I stand by what I said. We are still within budget, but we do have outstanding legal bills that need to be paid.
Thank you, Mr. Baxmeyer. Mr. Morton?
I would, I would be interested in hearing from Mr. Dalton and Mr. Murphy as far as they're not seeing eye to eye on the mechanism, mechanism, if you will.
I don't know if I would say that. I mean, I'm, I think our office is supportive of this additional appropriation, because we have bills piling up in the auditor's office that we need to pay, so...
I thought Mr. Baxmeyer said you two didn't agree on the liability versus the general.
Well, the funding, whether the liability fund could pay for it or not, the subsequent event in the liability fund is those, there's been other expenditures that we've had to use some of that money, the legal money to transfer to, to cover. There was the fire at the garage. I know we're going to get some of that money back, but we have to, we actually had to transfer some to budget it, to pay the bills. You know, you have to have a budget to be able to pay the bill, even if you're going to get a reimbursement, so that fund doesn't have as much as we, as you think it might have. It has a couple hundred thousand... hundred thousand left. So we are going to get, we have $3 million in the liability fund, so we're not, you know, hurting for money in that fund, but that, the original disagreement was whether this, some of these costs could be, should be paid out of the liability fund or the general fund, or the, the lit fund, the local income tax fund. And we took the position it should be the lit fund unless there was like a pending litigation matter. It's almost mute now because we, we've had to do some shuffling in that lit fund. And, you know, we have, I think Bree Roberts has been able to secure some money coming back into that lit fund, so I think that fund is going to be in good shape, but we still have to have the expenditure budget to, to pay a bill. So we would like you to approve this lit additional appropriation. It would be our recommendation.
Councilman Morton, the auditor and I are in lockstep. We agree that we would like you to approve this additional appropriation. The disagreement that is now probably 120 days old goes back to the difference between legal services that are normal, part of the everyday functioning of the county, and those legal services that are directly related to lawsuits. And the decision of the auditor's office is that only legal services directly related to lawsuits should be paid out of the liability fund, and that all other legal services should be paid out of the lit fund. That was the original disagreement. The auditor made his decision because that's his decision to make, and now we need an additional appropriation to pay our bills.
I appreciate that, the explanation from both of you. Thank you.
Any further council discussion on any aspect of 103.24? Mr. Katanzerite?
Mr. Root? Commissioner Baxmire, back to Item G. So I'm looking at the general fund for commissioners, and I don't see any, I don't see the line item for, for legal services, other than other contractual services.
Mark, it's in the local income tax fund.
Okay.
It's 1112.
So on the commissioners' was, I see other contractual services for $65,000 that you were approved for this year. And under lit, under 1112, you were approved for half a million dollars for legal services for this year. So you're saying that as of June, you spent $250,000 of the $500,000?
No, we spent.
The $500,000?
The $500,000.
So we didn't spend 48%. We spent more than that through June.
But when you look at all the legal services, total.
Yeah, Mark, we do a summary of all legal services, and I think it was actually 43% as of June 30th.
Okay.
If you look at all the legal, regardless of fund, that's a good way to look at it in some respects. It was like 43%.
So the half million's gone as of June or sooner, and this is an additional $600,000?
Yes.
But we budgeted $500,000.
Last year, the expenditures were more in the neighborhood of a million dollars.
They were. Last year, we expended, expended a million, a million, $1,029,000.
Right.
Ms. Hess?
So does this additional appropriation cover all the legal bills that are, we're going to get by the, before the end of the year? Or where are we at now? Where are we standing with the $500,000? How many additional?
We don't, I didn't think to bring a tally of what hasn't been paid. I mean, I don't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
The auditor's office has done a good job of keeping us informed, and we've kept our own tally as to what bills are outstanding. And like John, I didn't bring the exact sheet with me either. But we're projected, we will be fine at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. Figg?
Mr. Murphy, could you tell us what would happen if, at the end of the year, if, like this account here, if it's in the red, what would the state?
Yeah, we, well, we can't have an account in the red. Basically, at the, they call it the object level, which is like your personnel services can't be in the red, or your regular services, or supplies, or capital. None of those accounts can be in the red, in like a local income tax fund. So we have, we have to, we really have to make this additional appropriation to pay these bills, unless we have another fund that we think we can use. But I'm not aware of anything that could be done with that.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion on any aspect of Bill 103-24? Seeing none. We did have a motion, so we are ready for the final vote. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sorry. President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill number 103-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our hearing on fiscal matters. Next up is land use planning, and we have Bill number 82-24.
Bill number 82-24, ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, Land Uses of St. Joseph County Code, Section 154.512, Revised Development Standards for Large-Scale Solar Energy Systems, Renewable Energy Systems. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Can I report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 82-24 comes to the full council with no recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Abby Wiles, area plan director. Great. Before you tonight is a text amendment to the solar energy systems, large-scale solar energy systems, that was petitioned by you, the county council. I'll run through the standards that are included in this text amendment, and then can take any questions at the end. First standard that is part of the proposed revisions is increasing the minimum distance from a non-participating residence from the outermost foundation of a primary dwelling unit to a solar panel. It was previously 250 feet. This amendment takes it to 500. Additionally, a 500-foot setback has been added for properties classified or protected as a preserved park. It also amends the buffer yard landscaping requirements. The prior amendment had the type-two buffer landscaping was required when abutting a residential subdivision, including 10 or more lots. This takes it to any residential use or zoning district, or when abutting a park. Additional standards were added for this amendment related to drainage, that any drainage infrastructure damage needed, or needs to be repaired, and it gives the option to require a drainage plan by either the zoning administrator or the St. Joe County Drainage Board. In terms of an overall summary, this, this gives you an overall summary of what's being proposed. There were four letters received at the area plan, and we had five folks speak at the hearing. Two were in favor and three were against. It comes to you with a 6-2 unfavorable recommendation from the area plan, and then, as you said, no recommendation from the county council. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Katanzerite?
Abby, would you be able to characterize why the APC felt it was unfavorable, or, I'm not going to hold you to their verbatim, but just a general feeling why they sent it 6-2 unfavorable?
Two comments were made. One that, one by a member that said they felt that the standards were overkill, and another felt that the additional requirements, as they were needed, could be applied to a special use, application that is now required.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council questions for area plan?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
Did we, Abby, did we talk about, forgive my ignorance, did we talk about battery storage on any of this? I know that's a separate, I don't see anything on battery storage for this. Did we ever talk about that?
As it relates to this proposed text amendment?
Yes.
No. However, it's not, just because battery storage isn't specifically called out in the zoning ordinance, doesn't mean that we wouldn't classify it in, as a similar use and apply development standards. Specifically relating to like setbacks and whatever else was required for that specific
So if they want a battery storage, you'd have to come back to us?
case. Could you, battery storage is a, is a large topic. Util, since the council meeting two nights, or two weeks ago, utility-scale battery storage, where a battery can store and release up to 1 megawatt per hour, is approved downstate by the Department of Homeland Security. And there are a host of requirements that the state has to review for that. So just because there's no requirement called out specifically for battery storage in the zoning ordinance, doesn't mean that there aren't building codes, fire codes, or other requirements that need to be met.
They'd have to go downstate, then, is what you're saying?
If it meets the threshold for the utility-scale battery, which is 1 megawatt per hour, that it can be stored and released, then it would be reviewed by the Indiana Department of Homeland Security.
What about anything less than that?
Anything less, we would still apply whatever development standards based on the use that we would classify. It is, it's still a technology that we are learning about, and what, where exactly that threshold stands, in terms of how many of the pods or the trailers constitute a utility scale. So further study would be required before I could tell you with certainty when a project would meet that threshold.
You know where I'm getting at, though. But, you know, there's no word of battery storage on there. They couldn't put battery storage on the property or, without approval from downstate or us. I just don't, this is not asking for battery, battery storage, and this, and this text
This text amendment covers minimum distances to the property line.
amendment. Right.
Setbacks to parks, amendments to the landscaping, and additional standards for drainage. It was initiated by the county council.
Right, right.
And does not include any language for battery storage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Figg?
Yes, Abby, I mean, I put you on the spot here, but you mentioned downstate. Is it, downstate, does anything do with land values going up or down because solar? Do you know? I don't know, and I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry.
The Indiana Department of Homeland Security that reviews battery storage projects, I don't know that they would do an assessment of property valuation.
Yeah, anything downstate.
In tax to property valuation as part of their review for a commercial design release.
Okay, that's something I think we need to look at, of course, as a council. Thank you, Abby.
Any other questions for area plan? Hearing none. Thank you, Abby. Petitioner? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a very brief history lesson on the process that was undertaken on this. There was a small committee that earlier in the year undertook some preliminary text amendments that were presented to the area plan commission, and then subsequently presented to us and approved in July. It was heard from the community throughout that process that it was a good start, and there was more to be desired. What we also learned through that process was, and thanks to our legal counsel and to the area plan commission for clarifying this along, along the way, that what is presented to us must be voted up or down exactly as it's presented to us. If we were to consider any other amendments, alternatives, additional development standards, that could not be performed at the time that we voted on it in July with those initial text amendments, nor could it be done so tonight. The process is such that we can vote up or down what were presented this evening. Any additional considerations would have to be re-initiated back with area plan staff, area plan commission, provided a recommendation for or against from area plan commission, come back to us for, once again, consideration and approval. That's not to say that there aren't additional considerations that are worthy of time or, or acknowledgement. It's just something that we learned in July that I wish to reiterate tonight. The text amendments that we are looking at tonight were presented at that same public hearing meeting in July. They were passed unanimously, albeit with one amendment to the resolution at that time. That was a resolution submitted and sent back to the area planning commission for these additional text amendments. And that one, at that time resolution amendment, was to take away the smaller setbacks that were established for non-residential adjacent property owners. That was reduced to 50 feet, and bring that back up to the consistent 150-foot setback from a property line for non-participating property owners. So that was uniform regardless of the land use or zoning, albeit when that amendment was proposed, it was passed nine to zero as amended, presented back to area plan commission, who did, unfortunately, barely met quorum at the first meeting in which they considered it, and that was with one additional member who had a conflict of interest and had to set aside. The area plan rules dictate that they must have a minimum of five votes, which is a majority of the commission, regardless of how many are attending. Unlike the county council, where it's a majority of those who are present, as so long as a quorum is met, the area plan commission rules dictate that it's a minimum of the commission membership, regardless of who's present. So that got delayed a month. There was no motion that was successful in favor of, in favor against, or no recommendation. So it came before the area plan commission again last month, which resulted in that six-to-two vote that we heard from area plan staff this evening. That's the history lesson as it relates to it. That's, as it relates to the, what we can and cannot vote on this evening. Outside of that, I think area plan staff did a justified and judicious job at presenting what those amendments are. And, and it is something that we've seen multiple times now, once under the resolution, again, for those who participated in the area plan commission meetings, again, at our committee meeting two weeks ago, and before us again this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill number 82-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Please come forward, give your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
Jason Jean, 69195 Oak Road. First of all, this whole TIF thing was kind of entertaining. Seems to be a lot of confusion about it, but I'm not, I'm not confused at all. I know what two commissioners told me and multiple people on the, on the council, so I'm not sure what that was all about. But I'm in favor of this, but I still, still have the same comment that we have a long way to go. It's, it's still a start. I think it's a better start than what we had before. We talked about property values. There's been a lot of discussion regarding that and other setbacks, landscaping, many things that were discussed, are being discussed today. I want to repeat what Mr. Mike Wagner said, I think was one of the first meetings. He said that he just wants to have his private property rights not be infringed upon, and we're asking the same thing, and I don't really understand really what, what the difference is. If anybody has a problem with that, you know, we'd rather, you just tell us to our face and just say, this is all we're doing for you. In fact, and tell, tell the camera as well. Many people are working with us, and we do really appreciate that. And other times, there seems to be a lot of resistance for things that really just seem like it should be common sense. I'm not really sure what's going on, but it is kind of a weird situation. Thank you.
My name is Robert Axe. I am in favor of this proposal.
Can we get your address for the record, please? Your address?
Yes, 67720 Smilax Road, North Liberty, right across the street from a solar project, if it comes to pass. I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight because all stakeholders' thoughts on this issue are important. Ostensibly, we're here tonight to discuss the setback provision of these projects. I'm frankly infuriated that the project's proposals were allowed to move forward without the input and the feedback from the very group of people who will be most affected, the so-called non- the so-called non-participating rural residents. In discussing the solar project with several neighbors, I find I'm not alone in this feeling. A young man moved into my neighborhood with his wife several months ago, looking for the peace of quiet that rural life should provide. They spent over a hundred thousand dollars improving their residence and adding a substantial outbuilding, all before being made aware of the pending solar project, which will undoubtedly devalue their property and that of nearby non-residents. This communication issue, or lack thereof, takes me back 250 years to the dilemma the colonists had in seventeen seventy-four. Basically, taxation without representation. Further, the correct actions one needs to take to be rid of a solar project remains unclear. If a family moves to another rural location in Green, Liberty, Lincoln, or Union townships, because the exact scope and location of these projects is presently uncertain due to ongoing negotiations with the solar companies, who's to say that this family, after incurring the cost of relocation, will not face similar situations at their new location in the months and the years ahead? How far is this solar stuff going to go? Where's the end to it? Do you even know? Though the extent of property devalue, devaluation is not known, it's all but certain to take place, and I don't see any existing authority offering any compensation at all for this economic loss. A buffer zone of 500 feet is being discussed. That's a bit over 166 yards. Not really very far, but much better than 250 feet. Given all the factors and missteps leading up to this present situation, it's the very least that can be done to mitigate this atrocity. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Amanda Mitchell again. Address two-seven-two-zero-five, Riley Road. I want to speak in favor for this. I'm thankful that there is going to be some added amendments that I know from talking to a few in our, our community, that it would have made a huge difference if it fell like this had fallen before Hexagon got grandfathered in. And so, thank you. You don't know who you might have impacted in a positive way in our community. But I also want to point out, and I know that I've emailed you guys, that PJM has over thirteen active applications which have not been approved in our county for large-scale solar. So this is not it. We still have a lot more people that can be impacted. And to put it, we already talked about the best, the battery, right? The battery storage. But also, according to our own ordinance, one fifty-four-point-five-one-six, if you notice in there on number three, it says that the stabilization or revegetation of the site is necessary to minimize erosion. The zoning administrator, not the property owner, may allow the operator to leave the landscaping or designated below-grade foundation to minimize erosion and disruption to vegetation. So if a farmer, if they ever do decommission these, if that's left in there, can the farmer actually re, you know, till their ground? So, and then there's other things to consider. And then when we're talking about batteries and we put it into somebody else's hands to define our ordinance, we're at their mercy. And I know just because a couple things that came out in the FOA request that, I mean, Hexagon had contacted Abby Wiles and they asked about the thirty-six dash seven dash four dash one-one-zero-nine, and it was left to their interpretation whether or not they should be grandfathered in. And so when we leave it to others to define it instead of clearly defining it, it, it harms us. And also, it lacks transparency. And it doesn't get applied over. If you guys are having a hard time building a good ordinance, what happens when you guys get faced with this a couple more times and some other residences? Do you really want to keep going through this if this is harming others? It's better just to get it out there and make strong protections. So it's not just, it's for them and for us. And then the other thing too is we know that we've submitted, Madison County has a good ordinance that has stronger protections, which we've submitted, something like that. I've heard from others in the community that they've submitted other ordinances from other counties. And so we want you guys to just look at it. These are counties that actually already have thought through some of the problems and what they're seeing. And we'd like that chance to actually amend our ordinances to reflect the problems that we might face. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President Root, could I ask our attorney a question real quick?
You can ask the attorney a question, yes.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Mr. O'Brien, for Hexagon to be grandfathered in, could you explain to me how that happened, that they were grandfathered into the 2020 rules?
Sure. So, yeah, sure.
Just so everybody understands that.
So when the council made changes, changes cannot be implemented retroactively, so they become effective as of the date that they are approved or passed. And in St. Joe County, they do not require commissioner approval. So when the county council acted for the prior round of text amendments, at that point, they became effective. So activities that were initiated prior to that were not impacted, or at least that's the, that's the argument. I think it's the correct argument because Hexagon and/or other participants initiated their project prior to that change. So with regard to the changes this evening, if this is approved, that'll be another kind of line in the sand. Whatever change made this evening, if it, if it gets approved, then anyone after this evening that initiates a project will be bound by those changes.
So because Hexagon initiated their project via the county rules.
Right.
Before the July the ninth change in the rules by this body, they are therefore subject to the rules prior to the July nine change.
Right. And I think it was the, just the night before perhaps, but that, that is my interpretation. Yes, it sounds like that is also the interpretation that they've been provided.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shetzel.
Mr. O'Brien, I, I thought, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard Ms. Mitchell say that it was up to the discretion of area plan. Didn't you, didn't you state that, ma'am?
Do I clarify?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator.
Yeah, what I was going to say, to clarify, is we know that the emails had gone to area planning before they had submitted. It was actually prior in the year to find out if they would be grandfathered in. And it, we had a couple of the emails excluded, but we know following up that they obviously submitted knowing what our, our, because Abby's clearly told us that they are going to be grandfathered under thirty-six dash seven dash four dash one-one-zero-nine. So it was their interpretation of that law that's putting it in there. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So let's say if the council, because they asked them what their interpretation was, if the council would have, or if Abby would have said, yeah, we're not really seeing it that way, then it wouldn't, they probably wouldn't have submitted their application because they would have had to fight for it. Does that make sense?
I'd like Ms. Wiles to, to comment on that. Mr. O'Brien, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I, I agree with or concur with Abby's prior analysis, but go ahead and see what she has to say. But I, I'd also agree with how she interpreted it.
Right. So in the question, when the question was raised by a company regarding what ordinance they would proceed under, I advised based on our ordinance. I received an inquiry from the company pointing toward the stat, the state statute that Amanda Mitchell referenced, Ms. Mitchell, thirty-six-seven-four-eleven-oh-nine. We didn't just take it and roll over and say, okay, thanks. We, of course, reviewed that with our attorney, Brandy Ecker, who then also reviewed it with our county attorney at the time to make the determination. So we didn't just accept what the company told us for gospel. We reviewed the state statute and then confirmed with their assertion.
So, so with your narrative, that, that doesn't sound to me like it was just your discretion.
No.
Am I missing something?
It was, it was done in, in consultation with the area plan attorney and also shared with, with you all and with the commissioners in a memo that was drafted by our attorney.
All right, thank you.
My name is Kimberly Clark. My address is two-eight-five-five-one, Riley Road, North Liberty. And I am in favor of this proposal tonight, and I thank you for looking into this and to, about the setbacks. I'm in favor of that, although I think we have, what the other people said, I think we have a long way to go in this because I don't think we have all the facts. I don't think that Hexagon has been honest with us. We were told that there would be no battery storage. Seems like somebody else said that there was a bit of a flip-flop here. I heard that word tonight. And, and then I also heard that we're, this is technology that we're just learning about. I'm sorry, I live in the area. I don't want to be part of an experiment. I want the facts on this. I want to know what the implications of having battery storage are, what are some of the problems that we could see with this? And, you know, and then the other thing that we had heard from Hexagon is that they weren't going to do any deforestation around our area. But then, as I was looking through the plans online, I saw an area that's at Riley Road and Primrose. It's actually on Primrose, right close to Riley. And there's a forest there. And they're, according to their plans that they have there, that forest is no longer there. There are actually solar panels there. So I want some answers on the deforestation, if that's going to happen in our area, because I just don't think that that's right. So I think we have a long way to go. I thank you for your time tonight. I thank you for the changes that were proposed tonight, and thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Garrett. My address is two-four-nine-one-three, Stanton Road, North Liberty. I am in favor of the amendments, as I was last time when everything went through. First of all, I want to talk regarding the setback moving from the 250 feet to 500 feet. I'm not sure where all of you live, what your lot size is, what your acreage is for your own personal homes. But to put this into perspective, we have a 1,000-foot-long driveway. So a 500-foot setback, it's only halfway down our driveway. So like to us and to those that live out there, 500 foot is much better than 250 feet because 250 feet's not even to the edge of my grass before the field starts. So to us, that 500-foot setback is extremely important. Let's see, the drainage, I know that there was, the text amendments aren't up, so I can't say specifically, but I know that that was part of it tonight. I'm sure that all of you have heard the type of land that we have out there. Thank you. We have a lot of clay, terrible drainage. We have clay tiles all through our fields. A lot of them are broken just from time and from tractors driving over them and all, everything. I can't imagine what is going to actually happen when the solar actually goes in and how that drainage is going to be effective or affected. We have the Yellow Bank Creek that runs along our property from my in-laws to our house. It takes a lot of the water from all of the area fields, and so I'm just not sure what that's going to do even to that creek, how the fields are going to be affected. So I appreciate the fact that the drainage issue is added to this amendment. The buffers, the landscaping buffers, one of our neighbors with the, the proposed solar, they will be kind of bordered with, with solar. And so in talking with them, obviously, they're not in favor and, and non-participating. So those buffers are extremely important for them. One thing I just want to touch on is, as I was reading through the application that Hexagon put into the county, the solar panels on the one description and one drawing, and I do know how to read architectural prints and engineering and everything, the solar panels' max height is 22 foot, which I cannot fathom because any solar panels that I've seen are never that tall. So I'm just not sure how that comes into play. And even putting that six-foot buffer pine trees, it's going to take a long time before they even grow. So those buffers are extremely important. The guinea pig thing about battery storage too, I'm not cool with that. So hopefully we get somewhere with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Jen, you see anybody? We will now move to opposition then. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Please come forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
Steve Francis, Tuday Lake Drive, Clay Township. This has been a long process. It's very clunky, I realize. I feel like you've reached a balance with the current changes you've made to the solar ordinance. I worked on the original one and it sailed through without opposition. And it really reflected a state desire to be open to business to solar development. And what you're doing with this, if you tighten up these restrictions, 500 feet, you're encroaching upon the property rights of people who, farmers out there who have in fact not been able to make it for various reasons and they can get a solid lease for their land. You're encroaching upon the, the rights of businesses to come into the county. You're sending a message, and I've talked to solar developers, that we're not open to that kind of development. Yeah, we're open to data centers, but we're not open to solar development. Solar is the least impactful of all our energy sources. What you've heard is no evidence presented that it's dangerous, that it's harmful. People don't like to look at it. I get that. 250 feet is what the state law, the voluntary guidelines passed by the state law provides that allows the county to get state funds from the Department of Energy. And who voted for that law? Senator Nigodski, Senator Rogers, bipartisan, Representative Horak, Representative Devon. They don't vote the same on many of these controversial issues. So they voted for it at the state level. 250-foot setback is plenty. 500 is too much. You've got somebody living 50 feet away, they're going to encroach upon my or our property owners' right. 450 feet into their property, they can't put what they want on it. Landscaping, all along the property of the resident, if there's a house there, they've got to put lands, type-two landscaping all the way along and 150 foot so they don't have to look at solar panels if they walk out along their property line. This goes far too, far too far. I don't know why the special use is not enough. That would have solved a lot of the problems. Put a special use, so that when you get somebody like Hexagon, they got to go through two AP, no, ABZA, and then on to the council, and you have plenty of opportunity for prop, for people to come and voice their objections. And you can add additional requirements then. Please vote this down. Stick with what you got. It's adequate. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online that wishes to speak in opposition? Does it say Michael's iPad? Go ahead.
Yes, this is Mike Mc, Mike McManus, five-one-nine-four-zero, Lilac Road. I'm just astounded that the term battery and battery storage has now become a stalking horse for what is, and a Trojan horse for what's just clearly opposition to solar energy, period. I mean, you guys, just a short while ago, voted to build a huge battery manufacturing plant right over the Aquifer. So anybody that has been paying attention knows all about whether batteries are good, bad, or indifferent. Please don't vote for this. From the comments of those who are in favor of this amendment, and I sympathize with them, and I understand their personal issues, but they've made it clear that this is going to be death by a thousand cuts. If you vote for this now, everything in the solar project is going to come up for amendment over and over and over again. So please, don't vote for this. Hold the line. You spent an awful lot of time thoughtfully thinking about this project. Don't throw all that out the window. Don't throw all that out the window. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in opposition? See, no one. The public hearing on Bill Number 82-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to pass.
Second.
A motion to pass was made by Mr. Schatzel. It was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on 82-24?
Mr. President. Mr. Tanner.
Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's just one thing I'd like to address, and I've heard it from multiple sources now. I've attended, obviously, a couple of the Area Plan Commission meetings where this was discussed, even if a vote wasn't successful two months ago and then again last month. I've heard that the special use is enough. And in some cases, in many cases, and I think we all agreed on this whenever we voted to approve the text amendments that included the special use in July, it is enough to ensure that there's a public process. It is enough to ensure that there are hearings and the ability for the public to voice their opinion for or against, and to guarantee that there's some level of robust transparency with a project of this nature. But development standards and zoning requirements are not just about being enough, they are a communication tool. They are a way that we tell people who already own property, people who invest in property, developers, businesses who are interested in our community, they communicate what our expectations are. Yes, we still have the special use as a lever that we can apply for additional provisions, for written commitments, but the development standards and the zoning requirements that we have, thousands of pages on in our county code, are a communication tool. And if we know that there's community support, general community support, certainly not unanimous, for what the standard should be across the whole county, regardless of the project, regardless of the developer, regardless of who the neighbor is or what township it's in, then it's our duty to help communicate what that standard is. So even though the special provision or special use provision is enough to guarantee a public process, I want to be clear why I was really supportive of this to begin with, was that I don't live in a rural portion of the county, but if I did, I would want these protections. Not everybody who lives in these rural parts of the county that would be targeted for a project like this, at least conceivably, may not disagree with this or may disagree with some of the setbacks. They also have the ability to waive some of these setbacks through a written agreement that's signed, sealed, and certified with the county recorder. So it provides that flexibility to still exist while protecting those who, for their own reasons, have a right to be opposed to something like this being built immediately adjacent to their property and that they feel impedes on their sanctity of their property. And that's why the additional provisions were written. I think that's why, not to speak for the rest of the council, why the resolution that was sent back to the Area Plan Commission was voted nine to zero. It wasn't for politics. It wasn't for publicity. It was just trying to get another step closer to what is a good communication to anybody interested in developing this kind of a project in St. Joe County, what our expectations are. There are probably some aspects of these written commitments that don't have universal appeal for all nine members of this council. But as a net or as a gross, I think that there's general support of what these stand for. And if somebody votes in favor of it, I'm going to go ahead and say they may be voting in favor of it as a whole, even if there are provisions in it that they personally don't agree to. If anybody happens to vote against it, they were supportive of it before, I would wager that there are provisions in this that they do support that they, as a whole, they may not be able to get around now. So I had a bit of malaise and maybe a little bit of despondency during our committee meeting because of just the back and forth that's occurred around this over the last several months. But I hold firm and true that this was worth the effort, that these are good standards, that this is an effort to communicate to residents who already live here, people who want to build or continue to live here, move here, or those who want to invest in developments such as this, what our expectations are. And that's why I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Any further counsel comment or questions on the motion? Mr. Schatzel.
Thank you, President Root. Just to tag on to what Mr. Tanner said, you know, unfortunately, we can't, this ordinance that hopefully we pass here today will not affect the Hexagon project because before we passed the previous ordinance in July the 9th, they were able to get their commercial plan review filed. So they are under the 2020 ordinance. And we know there are people in that part of our county, a rural area where people have moved there and they've lived there, and they enjoy an incredibly different lifestyle from what people in South Bend or Mishawaka or Granger live. And it's, to them, that's, life is beautiful there because of that lifestyle. Unfortunately, we have people in that community who are going to have solar fields on two, three, and even one young man is going to have solar fields on four sides of his home if Hexagon does what they have proposed. I think we have an obligation to try and make sure that does not happen again, and that is why I support this ordinance.
Any further counsel comment, Ms. Hess?
Yeah, I'd just like to explain how I came to my decision as well. So for me, I was fine with things the way they were. And then I was good with special use because, as Councilwoman Tanner said, that does make it a public decision-making process. Everything comes in front of the council. So every project would be decided on its merits and be discussed, and special commitments could be added at that time. After meeting with some of the people in North Liberty, reading the emails, conferring with fellow counselors, I determined that I could support, as Mr. Tanner said, Councilwoman Tanner said, this ordinance, even though I do have some problems with it because I think it is, I am concerned about what Mr. Francis said, that are we looking at death by a thousand cuts? That this isn't good enough. And I'm finding that sometimes we forget that it is all about compromise because there are neighbors in North Liberty who chose to lease their property, who wanted to do it for whatever their reason, or they needed to do it economically or whatever reason. So those neighbors have property rights as well. So I'm not sure whose property rights get to supersede the others. But because of this circumstance where these solar fields are dotted around the community and not on contiguous property, I have, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I do have reservations about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further counsel comment? Seeing none, clerk, we had a motion to pass made by Mr. Schatzel, seconded by Mr. Tanner, so we are good to go. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schatzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes as nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 82-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land use and planning issues for tonight. Next up are miscellaneous issues, Bill Number 66-24.
St. Joseph County Handbook Revision Petitioner Commissioners.
Committee Report, please.
President Root, Bill Number 66-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. My name is Peter Augustino with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, and also here is...
Courtney Mullins, 7th floor, County City Building.
So I did send out a email earlier today with lots of information. But the big point of contention or discussion here with respect to the handbook amendment is going to be the PTO policy and where do we land? The prior proposal that had been circulated capped hours at 288 at the top end, and a number of employees were going to be losing some sick time. I tried to summarize where people landed, and I gave you a mini-chart. I want to thank John and Abby and John Butler in the Auditor's Office for giving the background information on this. But 57% or if you count all employees, including the Sheriff's Department employees, 51.72% of our employees have less than 49 hours of sick time on the books, just to give you a perspective of where we're at. And 86% of our employees have less than 200 hours with respect to sick time. So we're generally, the intent of the design of what we were doing was to modernize our benefit approach here because, under our old policy, for example, a new employee would have to wait a year for five days. And in today's world, it's hard to recruit people when that's what you're offering compared to what's happening with other employers. So I will say that the Option 1, PTO, does positively impact or keeps things fairly equal for about 86% of our employees. However, we do have a number of legacy employees, and I know there's a big concern out there. I know you've received lots of emails. We've received lots of emails. We receive through the HR's portal lots of questions, complaints, if you will, concerns about long-term employees. There's one employee that works in the Sheriff's Department that's been here since the 1970s that's got a long and large amount of sick time. So I did prepare for you an Option 2 for PTO. And what Option 2 says is that we're going to go through the process of seeing where you fit on the current chart, and then what you have left that is not converted to PTO, we're going to let you keep it going forward to be used. So it's hard to predict where that's going to land or cost. I speculated that if we had 147 employees in that 200-plus hour category, using the average rate of 2459, I derived that from taking all our hourly rates across all employees. And you're looking at $722,000. If we're factoring in all of the sheriff's employees, I think that we would easily be another $400,000 to $500,000 on top of that. That's not something that gets incurred right away or all at once, and may not get incurred at all. It's something that gets spread out over time based on how long people remain, where they're at. And it does not get paid out when people leave with sick time on the books. I think the biggest concern that we heard from our employees is that they've saved this time, they want this time to be available, and they feel like it's a takeaway. And that obviously doesn't sit well. And so looking at balancing the objective of trying to be more competitive in terms of recruiting employees and being able to offer more on the front end to get people to come to work to the county, also want to be mindful of the great value that our lots of employees over time have. And they feel that they've worked for this benefit. And so it does come down to, frankly, this is a benefit choice. The state law clearly puts that back on the fiscal body in terms of whether you want to grant that benefit or shape it the way we have it laid out in Option 2. So I can talk about other things, but I think that's the big, you've been here a long time tonight. That's the big, that's the big topic here with respect to where we're at.
Mr. Augustino, there was concern that elected officials would lose the right to run their departments. Can you address that concern?
Absolutely. And I did address that in the email, but I'll announce here publicly. So the way county government is set up is that we have a number of elected department heads, both under Indiana Constitution and under state law. Those elected department heads get to run their departments, okay? They get to decide who they hire, who they fire. They get to set the schedules that are worked. They get to do the assignments in their office. They get to decide whether to allow or not allow days off, when those are allowed. When it comes to the use of compensatory time, they get to manage and need to manage that. Same thing with flex time and other, the way those offices are run. So they, that power, that authority is not lost. It's not limited in any way by the handbook or the PTO policy. However, state law does specifically say that it's the fiscal body that sets the salaries, the number of employees, and the benefits. So while department heads can decide who to hire or who to put in a particular position, what benefits are available to that position or what that salary is for that position, that's something that gets approved by the fiscal body, the county council.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification because a lot of the emails were based upon that being taken away from elected officials. So I appreciate that explanation.
Mr. Katanzright?
So, Mr. Augustino, so would it be prudent to have that in the handbook so there's no ambiguity about elected officials and their authority under Indiana Code? Could that be added to this as an amendment?
That could be added in a preface to this, and certainly if...
That way, there's no question about it because maybe we have a newly-elected official and they may not realize what, how that works.
I would be glad to put something like in there in a preface or somewhere, some general commentary that doesn't affect the substance of anything here at all.
Since you just put out this email about Option 2, can you give me one more explanation of how Option 2 differs from Option 1?
So...
As it relates to tenured employees with lots of years on the books?
So under Option 1, which is what we started out with, was that...
288 cap.
Once we took, let's take, let's take an employee that has 200 hours of vacation time and 400 hours of sick time, okay? They can, and they're a 20-year employee, they can take the 200 hours of vacation time and 88 hours of their sick time to fill their 288-hour bucket. And then they would lose the balance of those other sick days, okay? They would not be able to have those anymore.
That's Option 1.
That was Option 1. Option 2, they would take those 88 hours, they would have 288 hours of PTO time. And then, and here's the thing about PTO time, where this is a benefit to the employees, is that they don't have to prove that they're sick, they don't have to prove why they're doing it. It's PTO time. We're trusting the employees, and they're taking ownership of how they use that time, what they want to do with it, okay? The balance of what was sick time that they had earned up until when this goes into effect would stay on the books for that employee. Now, newer employees would not be able to earn up to that level. What we're doing is we're protecting our grandfathering, if you will, employees who have earned hours under Option 2. So they, they would shift 88 hours to PTO, and then the balance would be left over if they needed it for sick time.
Is that all employees or just those with 20 years or more?
It varies for each employee. There's so many different variations.
We had some emails from people with 11 or 12 years that had 400, 500 hours of sick time accumulated.
Yeah.
So would somebody be able to retain their time if they've had 11 years of employment and they've accumulated 460 hours of sick time? There was a corrections officer that sent us an email on that.
Under Option 2.
Yeah.
Under option two.
Well, if they have it, if they have the time.
Right, if they've accumulated it.
There are some 10, 11, 12-year employees that don't have any.
Right.
So it's going to, it's, so the policy says if they have those hours available, after they have any time converted over to PTO, if there's still leftover sick time for that employee, it can then be used for sick time.
Okay.
But that is sick time, so that will require, and the employee does have an opportunity to have verification of sickness, illness, disability. It does not get paid or does not get prepaid, it does not get lump summed, it's there to be filled for days on the, comes out on the payroll.
Does it define in option two how that's spelled out in terms of after so many use of so many days, you must provide a physician's excuse or...
It's on point 14 if you have the addendum in front of you.
But the specific question you're asking is...
We don't have it printed out, Courtney.
Yeah.
They have an email.
Mark, I can't hear you.
I don't have it printed out, I have the original that was given to us and not the print.
It's not expressly stated about providing...
Proof?
That evidence or proof, but...
May be required?
Yeah. It's not mentioned specifically or expressly in option two. That could be added in there if we want to, but that's generally the employer's option to do that.
You'll add the language that I asked about explaining elected officials.
I can.
This goes into effect January 1st?
Correct.
2025 if it passes tonight.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Thanks. Mr. Augustino, on several or more than several of the emails that I received, one of the concerns of the employees were that they built up this PTO time in case of a serious illness. And obviously, I think that's a legitimate concern for the employee. But I guess my question is, how does that relate to like short-term disability?
So our, the county's got a short-term and long-term disability plans. They're not mandated and employees have an option to participate on those. They pay for it, it's a small amount, actually it's for it. On the short-term disability, I think it's up to 90 days, it pays you at 60% of your pay, it's tax-free. So however, the short-term disability takes credit for what you're receiving for sick time, so employees do not get to double dip. So some employees who may have lots of sick hours and also have short-term disability if they're using their sick hours, they may be disqualifying themselves from their short-term disability. But the point there is to not make someone, I guess, better off because they're sick or not working, that they're going to maintain where they're at as if they were continuing to get paid while working. And then long-term disability, how's that pay?
Kicks in at 90 days.
Yeah. And at what rate is it?
I'd have to look.
Okay. Typically, long-term disability does kick in at 90 days. You're also required to apply for social security disability at that point. And again, whatever benefits you receive for income replacement get credited against those. I mean, both, they'll take, long-term disability will take a credit for any sick time that we're providing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further counsel questions for Mr. Augustino?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is maybe both for you, Mr. Augustino and Courtney. My awareness is that there have been HR policy roundtables throughout the year. Is that correct? That there have been opportunities to engage and talk about this and many other subjects?
So there've been a variety of types of discussion groups. We've had, I think somewhere Diane participated in, I think Mr. Fig was in, I think Mr. Root might have been at one or two. We've had a discussion with some department heads as well. I can't say that we've had a sit-down with all employees, that has not happened. But the word certainly has traveled out, if you will, and this has been circulating for quite some time. The process of doing this handbook redo was started four years ago, got interrupted a little bit with COVID and then even in presenting it to the council and talking through this, it's been floating around for quite a while. And I know that we have had, I've had discussions with some department heads, some ideas have been put in here. For example, I, we didn't mean to do away with flex time, but we didn't expressly state it. Now it's set forth in here expressly. That's an example of one of the items. But there has been a lot of communication in lots of different ways.
I'd like to answer that for us. Yeah, we do monthly HR meetings in which all leadership and all elected officials are invited every single month. Those email invites have been sent out, we instituted those about a year ago. So this has been discussed at those. We have our HR inbox where we've been communicating with people throughout this entire process. I have had some elected officials and department heads come to my office, to Selena Carr's office, sit down, talk with us about this. One thing we've cautioned through this entire process is whatever we're discussing with you today can change tomorrow or the next day because there's been such an evolution of this policy over the last year. So if you talked to us six months ago, it's different than what it is today. So we answered questions in that period of time, but we do have monthly meetings separately. To answer the long-term disability question, the benefit amount is 50% up to the first 4,000 of your pre-disability monthly earnings. So it depends on what you earn, but for long-term, it's up to a 50% benefit of the first 4,000. So.
Sure. I do have a follow-up with regard to those meetings. And my question was purely out of curiosity, I've got it on my calendar, I see when those meetings occur. My question was kind of leading in twofold. Has there been participation at those roundtables, at those meetings? And was it explicitly communicated to department heads or those who are, that those meetings are open to that the HR policy, the human resources manual, the employee manual would be discussed at some of those meetings?
So we call them HR collaboration meetings, so anybody who has attended or listened to them, we always have an agenda, but separately, we always open the floor to anybody that is on the call for any questions. Pete also attends those meetings. So the, it's very fluid and what we are trying to do is get elected officials, department leadership, to ask your questions at the meeting, talk about what you want to talk about at the meeting. Because what does happen unfortunately is, once these meetings are done, we get bombarded with all of these emails. And we've started telling people, people have the same questions, please ask them at the meetings so that everyone can hear the answers. Pete is on the line, you can ask questions right then and there. It's just like when there was a status change on who can be exempt or non-exempt. You know, that was one of the topics that we did at one of our HR meetings. That time is used for whatever elected officials and department leadership need. So there is participation, there are some departments that participate more than others. But those times are always open and collaborative for any topic, once we get through our standard discussion. And we've given some handbook updates along the way, but it's been pretty fluid. I do know that a couple of months ago, we set up three meetings specifically for the council. We set three different dates, three different times, at any point, any of you could have come up to ask questions and do all of that. You know, I had really interesting, I'm going to use Raphael, I had some really interesting conversation with Raphael at that time. You know, he had the policy, he dug into it and asked a lot of questions, and that's pretty much what we're there for. Because at the end of the day, this policy is fully and completely shaped by you guys. You can choose to have it as is, you can choose to change it however you wish, you can choose to change it not at all and keep our current PTO policy. But we just want to put some options out there. As far as HR goes, we would love to see something better for new hires. Waiting a year for five days is, we're doing employment contracts to combat that. I've had conversations with employees that have been elected under the commissioners to try and let them know. Like I've sent out our proposed policies to potential candidates because that was one of the concerns when we would send them the HR handbook is that our benefit time is not great. So all of that.
Well, I appreciate that. I felt like it's been comprehensive the whole time. It may not be in top of mind for everybody that could have or should have been involved with it, but I appreciate the effort that's been put into it. It's really the message that I want to get back to. The addendum that was circulated to the council at the end of August, I felt helped answer a lot of the questions as it related to PTO and the changes. I think it also highlighted that what people have accrued is great, and I think there's kind of consensus, or at least I've heard it from those that I've talked to, that what people have earned, they deserve to keep. But at the same time, unlimited accrual rates moving forward is a financial liability for the county. It's a financial liability for any institution or organization that has employees. It's a benefit that those who've earned it, I personally, I'll speak for myself, deserve to rely on and have that to lean back on because they accrued it. It may not be a paid compensatory benefit like sick time, doesn't get paid out if you leave, but it is that safety net, it's that peace of mind that if something happens, that's there and they used it. The flip side of that is, if you're accruing sick time and not using it and coming into work when you're sick, you're doing a disservice to yourself and you're doing a disservice to everybody else that you work with. So please, use the sick time when you need it. We want you at your 100%, not your half self, not your quarter self, not your three-quarter self, and then potentially impacting those around you. But I understand why we got some of the feedback that we did, that you did, that I'm sure many of us have heard, because that is the peace of mind that a lot of folks have built up for themselves, the just-in-case. And as it relates to that, rather than just sit on a soapbox here and talk about it, when they've got, let's say, $400, 400 hours of sick time, that will get carried over if we elect to vote forward option two, as it's been presented. And let's say they've got 288 hours of personal and vacation time, too. They cap out at that. Anything above that, they actually do get paid out above and beyond for vacation and personal time.
It's the vacation, and this has been calculated, and it's a moving target as people take time off, but, and also as people load up on their anniversary date, they refill their bucket. So there are going to be some payouts, and that we calculated, I think, was it 644,000? I think it was, or based on numbers as of September 24. That is for the vacation or personal daytime, not sick time.
Right. And that's just whatever they're over the cap on.
Correct.
And if we don't do something like that now, that cost is presumably going to increase because our payroll base, you mentioned an average across the board earlier of $24 and some odd cents, but that number will go up from year to year to year presumably, which means the cost to the county to pay that out in future years would be higher as people accrue same or higher rates of, above that cap. So I appreciate that policy, I think it's wise for us to do that. But if they've got the sick time and they're at or near their cap of PTO time, starting January 1st, 2025, they have the discretion of using PTO as they see fit within the confines of the HR manual. They're not forced to use the sick time, it's there if they need it. They could exhaust all of their PTO before they even touch the sick time, but they won't accrue more sick time.
They won't accrue more and the policy favors use of the PTO time first, and then if all that's done, then they've got the safety net for those that have that, those accrued days.
I appreciate that clarification. It's how I understood it, but I wanted to hear it from you all.
So overwhelmingly, the number one complaint that we got was, so we have about 13% of our employees that would be losing time, roughly. So you're one of those people, you have 480 hours, you've been saving it just in case you have to have surgery. That way you can get paid your full 12 weeks of FMLA if needed, right? Overwhelmingly, that's the number one complaint. I've been saving this sick time in case I need to have major surgery. So the option two that Pete sent to you guys, in it, it states that if an employee is unable to work due to illness, sickness, or disability, and the employee has used up their PTO time, they would be able to tap in to that sick time bank if you choose to vote for option two. So you're moving all of that sick time into a bucket, you're not going to touch it, you're going to continue to use your 288 hours of PTO a year, which is a lot of time. But say something catastrophic does happen to you and you need to take those 12 weeks off and you had that 480 hours. Option two allows then, once you've used your PTO, to tap into that bucket. So then again, long-term and short-term disability don't even apply to this situation because you have sick time that is built up. And even if you don't have the full 12 weeks, say you have 100, like, I personally have 100 hours that I will lose at the end of the year of sick time if you guys vote for option one. For option two, those 100 hours of mine would then be placed into a bank in case I had something catastrophic. So that is an option to have, so.
I appreciate that, and I'm going to pivot really quickly because there was one member of the county police who reached out about something that wasn't related to PTO. And I don't want to say that this is like an error or a mistake, we have Scrivener's errors, things happen, but...
That'd be a mistake.
It could be.
What page is that?
But it was very, it was very specific. There were two instances that I think were very specific. And the first was saying that the handbook was not written with the police or jail staff in mind because it was a policy that said there was a requirement to abstain from violence. Now, merit officers who are on the street and patrol are protected by merit policy, so I'm not necessarily concerned about that. But county jail officers are not merit officers up to that point, and they may have to resort to some level of measured, we'll call it violence restraint, aggression to control a potentially violent situation. Would you like to clarify that?
Well, I think sometimes you gotta use, like my dad would always say, common sense. I think the context is that we do not want violence between employees, number one, and then also as to the public. But if it's inherent in your job, I don't think there's anything in the handbook that prohibits that. And if we need to clarify that, or certainly open to doing that.
And that may be all it takes is just unless inherent to your specific position and department. I don't know the suggestion to that, it's just something I wanted to bring up. I didn't know who all it went to, I think it went to us for sure. And then the second instance was on page 52, ghost employment is a Class D felony, and apparently, I'm no expert in this, but the class system is no longer used in Indiana, it's a Level 6 felony by the state code.
That's correct.
Okay. So those are the kinds of things that I don't necessarily think preclude us from moving forward with the policy that we have presented before us. Those are the kinds of things that I think necessitate clarification in the future that require occasional addressing amendments rather than a full-blown policy change like what's presented before us today.
So this handbook has in it language that allows those types of corrections to happen without coming to the council. The things that do require council approval specifically are, in fact, the benefit portion. The other items can be cleaned up without having to come here. And the language in the handbook does allow that. So, because I will tell you right now, the table of contents, for example, may be off on a couple pages as well because of some edits, but that will all get cleaned up. There's going to be some links that need to be added in here that this will be online and will... and those will be live links that can, for example, the travel approval and reimbursement policy, an employee can link right off to that. Abby, put that together for us. Thank you.
And I'll just state, I know I've monopolized a lot of time here, so I'll make this really quick. I appreciate everything that's gone into this. I came in tonight expecting that we should table this and move it on for another month. But as option two is distributed today, that protects those banks of sick time. As we've talked about some of these, you know, errors and omissions, clarification-type things, I'm far more comfortable with where we're at, and I think that the effort's been put forward throughout the year. Participation may have been hit or miss. That's not for the lack of what appears to be HR's effort to make this accessible. And, and I just wanted to say thanks. I think I'm actually comfortable enough to make a vote on this tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Tandray?
Yep, real quickly, the dollar amounts that you're raising, the 600,000, I don't know why I heard two numbers tonight. One was 600, one was 700. Okay. I mean, they're, they're large numbers. They are concerning. There are, you know, that's a liability that we have on the books. But we've certainly done a good job as a council to create this budget surplus and cash reserve over the last 20 years, up to $40 million. Would it be prudent for the auditor's office to put that in a reserve spot all by itself? Or know that we, so we don't, you know, should we, should we set that asset aside knowing that it's a liability to the county? Is that a better auditor question?
We've already passed the budget, you know. We can't really do anything until next year, till next January, if we want to reserve at that time. But we're actually planning to do an additional appropriation in January to pay this amount.
Okay.
Has everybody agreed that, that it should be paid in January? Is that comfortable?
We actually need to bring that at the December committee if possible, so we can vote on it in January, so that we can...
All right.
If possible.
And unlike what Mr. Tanner said, my question to you is a little bit different. So, with what you've brought up today, option two, the change in, you know, I know it's a Scrivener's error, but, you know, from a class felony to a number felony, and speaking about... Something else we added in there, I can't think of what it was. Oh, the elected officials part. I mean, would it be better for us to come back with a complete option two in November to vote on it? With all those things corrected?
No.
No?
I would like to move forward now so we can get that all cleaned up, finalized. Employees know what's happening. We've got the plan in action, and...
So then we need to make some amendments tonight on the floor, and you're going to agree to those amendments?
I'm agreeing, yes. We're agreeing, we can add the preface on elected officials or put that comment in there that nothing takes away their power to do that. Correction on 11-6 felony on ghost employment. And then violence is, if it's inherently needed as a part of executing your job duties, that's not a violation. And if there's any, I mean, those amendments were agreeable, too. And if someone wanted to make a motion to approve the handbook with option two and the amendments noted so far, that, that would be acceptable to us, but it's the pleasure of the council.
Mark, would you, would you be okay if we made a, asked a question from the table here?
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
I just had one question, I think, well, two, actually. I think I understand the sick better now. With option two, an employee of any length of service, an amount of sick time can utilize that. Is that correct?
If their maximums are over whatever years of service they are from the policy.
So, what, what do you mean?
So, like, if you're looking at the policy. So, if you're a two-to-seven-year employee, and you have accrued and saved more than 200 hours, then you would put that extra sick in a bank. If you're an eight-to-14-year employee and you have over 208 hours, that extra sick would go into a bank. If you're a 15-year employee, 204...
So, if you don't meet that, you can't...
Then it all gets converted into PTO.
Yeah, but you're also...
Oh, it'll get converted into PTO? It'll either be PTO or sick bank? We have a lot of employees in the five-to-seven range.
You only would have a sick bank if you exceed these stated maximums, because it would all be PTO.
It'll go toward the PTO portion?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other, last other question was the years of service. You know, the one, the two-to-seven, the eight-to-four, eight-to-14. Those are as of January 1st, 2025. So that, a new employee would stay at the 160 hours during their lifetime as an employee? Or would they go up, would they go up the scale?
So, just for the one years, if you read the policy in the totality for point two, it says for the first year after the first partial calendar year, full-time employees will have 160. For the second year, it goes up to 200, and that's where you stay. Like, if you read that first part of the policy.
Okay. So, they, they don't go up to 208 and 238 and 288?
No. So, over time, what you will see 20 years from now, if you pass this policy, you'll have very, very, very few employees that will be over 200 hours. In the state of Indiana, the average amount of PTO days is actually 10 days across the board. That is 80 hours. That is the average across the state in private business. The state itself has a slightly higher average. I had that pulled up. But it, it makes us much more competitive, so...
And Courtney is going to come to our office on Friday to kind of talk to our employees, so we do appreciate that.
Yeah, I have the auditor's office on Friday and the treasurer's office as well.
Ms. Hess.
I'll try to keep it brief. So, thank you again for all the work. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and we did participate in some early committee meetings, which also were a little fractured. But I think in retrospect, it might have been a good idea to me, and I sent this already to Pete in an email earlier today, to meet with the departments and their employees during the beginning of the process to get some feedback, to tell them what you were thinking, and have some exchange of ideas then, early on in the process. And I just want to clarify, so the people who have earned any sick hours that have been earned before January 1, 2025, individuals get to keep in sick bank, no?
It goes, you gotta, you gotta follow the calculation process.
Okay, because I'm looking at your summary here, but...
Okay, so, we're going to see where that employee is based on years of experience. Okay, it's going to determine what size bucket they have, okay? So, when you load that bucket up with what they have as far as earned vacation and personal time, then you get to transfer, if they have sick hours and they're already earned that they haven't used, you're going to fill the bucket up with sick hours. Then if there's still sick hours left after that, they get to keep them. So, we're not, we're not taking away anyone's sick hours. It's, it's one of three things. They're either going to get a bump up. They're going to have their sick hours converted to PTO, or they're going to get PTO, use, conversion to PTO plus a remaining balance of sick, sick time. So, they are going to have that time available to them. It's either going to be used to fill up their PTO bucket, or it's going to stay in a separate bank.
Okay, and that's determined by the number of years of service?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, and I know sometimes it's, it's not easy to use up your time. I was at a, when I, I was at IU for 20 years, and I earned five weeks of PTO. In addition to that, I earned a certain number of sick hours. So, that was separate buckets. But I could never, ever take five weeks off at a time. So, I continued to carry five whole weeks over every year. So, I would have that, and I'd have to dump whatever extra I had into the sick bank. So, it was very, very liberal policy, clearly. Another, of course, institution. And so, and again, when I left IU, I left my, I don't know, 600 hours of sick time behind me and didn't get paid out for that, but I got paid out for what time PTO I had. So, but I know I didn't take the time because I couldn't get away from the office. My job would not get done if I took that much time. And so, it's the same thing. So, and did I also understand that you're saying that somebody would have to use this PTO bucket prior to going into the sick bucket?
Yes.
Yes, because we're converting everything into one bucket.
I see, got it. All right.
Can I ask a question? So, is there an advantage, I mean, with, with, since some of those sick hours are becoming PTO hours, that's better for the employee, right? Because they don't need a sick, sick days or a note, and then they can use, that cashes out when they leave?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And just, it's about 13% of employees that this would affect. The other 80-something percent of people don't have enough banked up.
Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, my question has been answered, so I don't want to repeat. Thank you.
Any further council questions? Mr. Shetzel?
Mr. Murphy and Ms. Hess's questions exemplify my, my concern. And I'm going to refine one of Mr. Tanner's questions just slightly, hopefully to get an answer here. Courtney, of the elected officials and department heads, have any not attended an HR meeting or met with you privately to understand this policy?
Don't put me on the spot like that, Dan.
Would you say there are a number that have not?
Don't do that.
You don't want to answer the question?
There are individuals who have not attended any meetings nor met with us, yes.
Okay. See, that's my concern, and that's why, and we just got option two today. Is that correct? So, I really, I would like to put this off a month just so we get understanding across the board with department heads, with elected officials. We all understand option two totally. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, but I felt it was an important question. I think that would help me feel better from the perspective of the employees voting yes on this.
I would love to make those opportunities available to anybody who would like to attend, as I have in the past.
I'm sure you have, but I'm sure people don't take advantage of them. And they really need to understand the policy so they can explain it to their employees.
So, I will, so I have meetings that are already set with departments related to this. So, if the council is okay with it, I would like to keep those meetings fairly brief and speak to option two. Is that what we are at least feeling out more than anything? Okay. Because I know that there's a lot of questions, and I want to continue to say until something is finalized. But I will answer questions based upon option two, because those meetings are starting this week. And then I'd also, John Murphy would, might want to speak to this. There is a timeframe in which the auditor's office needs to know what policy prior to January 1 because there won't be enough time to enact the new policy. So, we don't need to rush through and pass it, but if this is something that possibly doesn't get passed at the next meeting, then we're going to have to wait for some time and set another target date because there won't be enough time for the auditor's office to do what they need to do as far as PTO.
Ideally, it would be on, ideally, the policy would be in effect for the first pay date in 2025. So, you know, that overlaps fiscal years, but that, that works out better from a budget point of view to have it actually in effect for the first pay date in 2025. So, that means you have to work on it, we have to work on it like in December.
So, if we pass this in November?
Yeah, like the November 10th or something. That should be okay. I think that'd be okay. That would be probably the last time you could pass it. December would probably be too late.
No, I think that November gives us, because we did get quite a bit of information from Pete this afternoon. You know, I know he's been working, it was probably the first opportunity he had to get it to us, but we didn't really have a lot of time to digest it, and I'm still trying to work it out in my, some of it in my brain. So, I would feel better, and I'd feel better if all the departments and employees had an opportunity to have this conversation and, you know, and know that it was just strictly related to the handbook and nothing else, right? It was just strictly a meeting about that, to get all, like, you're going to have a meeting on Friday with them. So, I would feel better about voting on it if we had more time to digest it and get feedback.
Can you raise your hand if you like option two? Okay.
But I also like the idea of employees and department heads getting to totally understand what we're talking about before we pass it.
And it's, but it's helpful to give them, like, to point them in which, the way we're going to go. I know it has to, you want to know that they understand what's going on before, and they want to know, is this what we're going to do, so...
Right, right, good point.
But I think the signal has been received.
So, there, our next scheduled HR collaboration group that is a Teams meeting is November 6. And that is when I have been encouraging leadership and elected officials to attend. That way, everybody can hear everyone else's questions.
But if they can't attend that, I mean, you know, I mean, there's...
If they can't attend it, they can reach out to me. But also, we're in the middle of open enrollment. There are two people on my staff that can talk about this policy, so we are trying to do scheduled Teams meetings as much as possible because there's only four of us in the department, and it's open enrollment. And, you know, so they can reach out, but I would like to schedule Teams meetings as much as possible so you can have collaboration from multiple people and everybody hearing what everyone else is saying as much as possible. Individual meetings just, they can't really happen.
We're not saying individual, but within department sometimes. And I guess I'm old-fashioned, so sometimes I think a person meetings are more productive, but that's just me.
What time is that, HR collaboration?
It is, hold on.
It's the day after the election.
Yep, it's the 6th at 11:00 a.m. So, just, and I know this isn't what you guys want to hear, trust me, I know it. But there are four of us, and it's open enrollment, and only two of us can really go through this. We don't have the time to necessarily come out of office and meet with 30 different departments on their schedule. It just, and then it's, a lot of times, it's just the same questions that other people have. So, we are trying to utilize Teams as much as possible because we also have our whole other jobs that we have to do for 2,200 covered lives.
Right. I think we all understand that you guys, for four people, you're doing an amazing job. You know, if we look at the numbers that HR departments normally have for our size of organization, it's a lot more than four, right? But I think it's great that you have this meeting on the 6th. You get the word out to department heads. Maybe Commissioner Baxmeyer lights some fires and gets those department heads there. And they all hear it, they have the opportunity, and then they get that information to their employees before we pass it.
Yep. I'll resend out option two to that entire group so that they can get that out to their employees, and then we'll have that meeting. And if we need to have a couple others, I'll schedule some others.
The only back November 12th is the next meeting, right? That's our next meeting.
Yes. And Courtney, I need to come see you about open enrollment.
You what?
I need to come see you about open enrollment.
Come on up, Randy.
After the 15th.
Yeah.
Make sure you make an appointment, Randy.
You have your book with you. I'll make the appointment right now.
Yeah.
No, I've...
Come up whenever you...
No, Randy, online.
Yeah.
Can't do it in person.
I can do it in person, but let me know when you're going to come. I need to know when you're going to come.
Thank you.
If we're going to table, we need a motion now, otherwise, we're going to proceed to a public hearing.
Motion to table.
We have a motion to table and a second if there's discussion on the motion. Hearing non-courting, will you take the role on the motion? Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Wrong one. Ms. Hess? Mr. Katan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
No? Okay. Mrs. Drake?
No.
No? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
No? Motion passes six, or 6-3. Motion has been carried. Bill number 66-24 is tabled until the November meeting. Bill number 66-24 is tabled until the November meeting. That concludes our miscellaneous for tonight. Next is unfinished business. Next is new business, a review of Mr. O'Brien's legal bills for, I believe, just July and August. May I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, made by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion on the motion? Hearing non-courts, will you please take the roll? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tandray?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Schetzel?
Yes, also.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0. Thank you. Let the record show that by a vote of 9 to 0, Mr. O'Brien's legal bills for July and August have been approved. Next is old business. Seeing none, next is privilege of the floor for the public, limited to three minutes. On any item not on tonight's agenda, please state your name and address for the record.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street. It was great to sit and watch this. You guys ask a lot of questions. Great, great job. I feel well-represented now by all of you, because you're on the ball, man. I had to stay because I had to rebut something that was stated earlier, and I'm getting tired of hearing the explanation. I was reminded that these things are better, are good for doing something other than making noise at inappropriate times, when I saw several people using them to speak up here. So I found the news item I was looking for, and it's gonna help me make my point that it's time to start telling the truth about this issue. April 25, 2023, General Motors and Samsung SDI planned to invest more than $3 billion in a battery cell plant. They didn't name the place at that point. In June, it came out that it was New Carlisle. Shortly after that, GM took down the mitten that we were all so worried concerned about along State Road 2. So to say there was, that things hadn't started to proceed yet is absolutely wrong, and that nothing happened between GM and Samsung until two months ago in August is absolutely false. They have been, they've been sitting on their signature hands for whatever reason, but they've been doing things, just kind of sitting and waiting. I just was, I'm tired of hearing that things are going according to plan. GM and Samsung have been in a partnership, not officially, since April of 2023. Anybody who lives out there, and I drive through there several times every day, all you gotta do is, as you're driving up to, look to the north, now even look to the south. It used to be there was farm fields just six months ago to the south. Now, all of a sudden, there's more production going on there than when you look to the north, and there is still no longer a mitten, but there's really nothing else but guys playing in dirt either. Nothing, no construction, nothing's being built. It is just, I apologize ahead of time, don't urinate down my back and tell me it's raining. There is no work going on, no construction work going on there right now. It's just guys playing in dirt. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Michael, go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I would just like to make an observation, sort of follow-up on what Dan just said. Tonight was a very long meeting, but thank you very much for all of you who asked questions on all of the issues that were presented before you. That's in great contrast to many of the commissioners' meetings that we've had over the past several months. I think the longest one of those lasted 29 minutes. There was no discussion, and the public learns a lot more when the people to whom we've entrusted our tax dollars and leadership ask questions, so that we can hear the answers, hear the questions and the answers. I can't tell you how enormously helpful that is. One further observation, while you're continuing to work, and I'm sure all of you are keeping your eye on this, but I heard some comments this evening that as far as the projects are going, that we have lots and lots of them, and that they're all coming in under budget. And without being able to see all the books and all that sort of stuff, people like me who try to stay informed wonder how it is then that we needed another $5 million bond today if so many things are going on and so many things are coming in under budget. I'm sure that all of you will be keeping your eye on those numbers to make sure that the public's money is well-spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, privilege of the floor is over. Next is adjournment. May I have a motion? First by Ms. Hess, the second by Mr. Tandray. Any further comments? All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.